I'd like to call the April 9th regular meeting of the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. I think the information has been distributed that if you wish to comment, make sure and go to the lectern in the back and sign up. You can turn that paperwork in up front. We'll go ahead and get things started. Just again, a reminder, double check, but make sure and silence your cellphone. And again, thank you. Go ahead and take roll call.
Hampi?
Here.
Bishop?
Here.
Latham?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Kimball?
Present.
Stephenson?
Here.
All right. Any amendments to the agenda this evening?
There's none.
All right, seeing none, move on to ceremonies, appointments, announcements, and/or presentations.
There's none as well.
Okay. Commissioners, any declaration of conflict this evening?
None.
None?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to consent calendar. Mr. Manley?
Yeah, we have the minutes from the March 8th, 2019 meeting as item A.
Okay. Everybody have a chance to take a look at the minutes? I'd look for a motion.
I've moved to approve as presented.
A second.
Okay. Moving to second, roll call.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on an issue that is not on the agenda. Comments on issues that are for planned or future meetings, and those agendas should be held for that meeting. Do we have anyone? Okay, not seeing anyone, we'll move to unfinished and old business. I see we have none.
Correct.
That takes us to the meat of the evening this evening, and that would be our public hearings. One quick note, please remember, we are not at a sports event and stadium, so I would ask that you would keep applause, cheering, anything of that nature, to a zero, and we're all going to civilly transition through this whole piece. That being said, we'll go ahead and open up the first individual public hearing this evening, River City Bed and Breakfast Special Use Permit. And I'll let you go through the file numbers.
First, good evening, commissioners. My name is Jamie Hayes. I'm Planner 1 in the Community Development Department here, and I'm here to present the special use permit, case file U S E dash 1 dash 2019. The applicant is John Butler, and the owner is Georgia Lee Perrier. The requested action is to approve the approval of a special use permit authorizing the use of a bed and breakfast classification for general hospitality uses such as weddings, business events, private parties, family reunions, as well as bed and breakfast services in a single-family R1 residential zone. The single-family residential zone is defined as a zone intended for one single-family home on a lot of minimum size or larger, and to permit other accessory uses that are associated and compatible with residential uses. You might wonder what gives them the right to apply for a special use permit. Here you can see from the Post Falls Municipal Code Land Use Table that a bed and breakfast in an R1 zone is an allowable use with a special use permit. The American Planning Association uses LBCS functions and descriptions as a guiding document for planners to make land use decisions. Under the 1300 category is 1310 Bed and Breakfast, 1320 Rooming and Boarding, 1330 Hotel, Motel, or Tourist Court, and 1340 Casino Hotel. The 1300 series is basically an establishment to serve lodging and short-term accommodations for travelers. They may offer a wide range of services from an overnight sleeping space to full-service hotel suites. They may offer these services in conjunction with other activities such as entertainment or recreation. The subject site is hatched in red here. The surrounding land use, as you can see, is 65 acres of Black Bay Park, the Spokane River, and here we have going north and south is South Handy Street, and running east and west is East Plaza Road, which would be probably the primary ways that people would be traveling to get to the subject site. This is what the special use permit is asking for. This is what it looks like. This is the Amway House. As far as zoning, this is zoned all residential. The future land use designates this as residential as well, and you can see Black Bay Park there is a natural area, and that is a public reserve institutional in green. As I said earlier, the current use is single-family residential. The surrounding land use is residential and public reserve, being the Black Bay Park. The surrounding zone is R1 residential, and water and sewer are both provided by Post Falls. There are four review criteria for a special use permit. One is the implementation of the special use will or will not conform to the purpose of the applicable zoning district. The purpose of the R1 zone is to support single-family residential homes and to permit other accessory and compatible uses. A use such as a bed and breakfast in a residential zone is permitted with use with a special use permit where the implied use will not compromise present uses. It borders Black Bay Park. Between Black Bay Park and the Spokane River frontage, the natural topography supplies the property with an added amount of privacy to the proposed facility as well as to the residing neighborhoods in the River Park Plaza neighborhood. Once again, this is the surrounding use, where you have Black Bay Park, the Spokane River, and then the single-family residential zone. The development will be required to provide enough parking for the occupancy limits set forth by the municipal code to mitigate any issues concerning overflow parking onto public local streets upon project completion. The per years are currently in negotiation to acquire the one acre site adjoining their property to the east to accommodate any parking concerns. The additional parking would accommodate up to 100, 120 spaces. And right here, as you can see, this is the one acre parcel that they are trying to acquire that would be for their parking, for the special use permit. The proposed development will be required to complete the site plan review process, which ensures compliance with city code requirements. The second review criteria is whether the proposed use constitutes an allowable special use as established by this chapter for the zoning district involved, and complies with all other applicable laws, ordinances, and regulations of the city and state. The proposed use is an allowable special use as established by the zoning ordinance. The proposed facility is also required to meet all local, state, and federal requirements, including building and fire code. The third criteria is whether the proposed use will or will not be compatible with the health, safety, and welfare of the public or with land uses in the vicinity. While concerning health, safety, and welfare of the public, the proposed use does not have any noxious characteristics that would be unsafe or damaging. The site is currently being serviced with domestic water and water reclamation services. The proposed use also does not anticipate to produce any impact, so it adversely impacted adjoining transportation systems. The existing roadway network has capacity to handle the proposed land use. On-site specific issues related to fire protection would be handled at the time of site plan review. The fourth criteria is whether the proposed use will or will not comply with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan. Now, overall policy five is whether neighborhoods and centers should be compact, pedestrian-oriented, and mixed-use when possible. The permitting of the River City Bed and Breakfast would make use of an underused residential home and accentuate mixed-use residential uses. The proposed use is not inconsistent with the existing land uses, as there is another bed and breakfast within the general vicinity. Policy number seven is to encourage a balance of land use to help Post Falls remain a desirable, stable, and sustainable community. The permitting of a bed and breakfast in an R1 residential zone provides diversity. Bed and breakfasts are rising in popularity and could have significant economic benefits to Post Falls by promoting the area. Also, the location and beauty of the proposed site, combined with the Amway House being located next to the Spokane River and next to 65 acres of the Black Bay Park, would make it a desirable place to visit. Overall policy number 10 is that growth strategy should encourage infill development of property within the city. The permitting of a bed and breakfast at the historic Amway House is a viable use of an existing space by showcasing one of Post Falls' beautiful and unique mansions. Preserving this eccentric piece of property showcases our natural resources such as Black Bay Park and the Spokane River. Now, staff has compiled some conditions based on the special use permit. And one is that they must complete a site plan review process. Two is that they need to mitigate their parking to preclude infiltrating the nearby neighborhood with on-street parking demands. Three is that they need to meet all city-adopted building codes that will come with a change of use for the structure. And four, prior to attaining a building permit for any tenant improvement or change of use for any portion of any structure in the site, the applicant must show evidence to provide sufficient off-street parking. In addition, must locate their on-street parking demands along the right way in which they front. These were all the agencies notified. There were no agency comments. Do you have any questions?
Questions for staff?
How many parking spaces does it currently have as-is if they don't acquire any additional property?
You know, I cannot actually answer that, because I would just say whatever is available, and that I don't know. John, do you happen to know what the available parking is?
Off the cuff, I don't know. I know that they have asphalt, and they have parking shops there. I don't know how much that can specifically hold, potentially the applicant would know more specifics of actual garage stalls and onsite parking that they could supply.
Yeah, that might be a good question for applicant.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? As of now?
Anything else?
Not yet.
Okay. Thank you very much. Please remember, state your name, address.
Is there anything that you would like to say? My name is John Butler. My address is 1836 North Rose Boulevard, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho.
What can I help you with?
How did we get to that?
I think it's one of the first great.
Yeah. Okay, good.
Technically challenged, sorry. Then I can just press something out, okay? On behalf of the Perrier family, we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and present our requests. What we are asking for is a special use permit for a bed and breakfast. Just a little brief history, as a lot of you people know, we've had this property on the market for nine years. A lot of activity, a lot of showings. A lot of really qualified buyers, they get there, though, and I think they look at the scope and the magnitude of the property, and it's a little overwhelming, probably more than what they bargained for. But during that process, I've had, oh gosh, I don't know how many people have called and want to have weddings and business events, seminars, and things like that, and we can't do that, obviously, because we don't have the right permit for that. What was really an eye-opener for us last year, we had a big realtor event there, and I think there's over 500 realtors that showed up. And every time we have an event like open houses and stuff, there isn't anybody that doesn't want to show up, because they all want to see the inside of this place. They looked at it from the river, and they go, wow, what is that? Like a lot of people stated, it looks like a hotel. So with that event, though, it kind of opened my eyes that really probably the highest and best use for this property is a bed and breakfast, you know, a place where you can have special events, business seminars, church out, whatever, just anything that could be open to the public. The reason we believe this special use should be permitted are the following. The size and scope of the property lends itself to be utilized for a bed and breakfast and events. The property is very private. For example, you can't see what's, let's see here. It's right there. Well, how do you get that large up there? For example, this area right here, a lot of people have probably seen this, maybe you haven't. From the river, you can't see what's on top of here. And last year, when we had our big realtor event with 500 people, they were all pretty much in this area by the pool. We had a band there, and they concluded at 9:00. But you can't see that from the river, so it's real private. And in the same token, from the street level, it's very private. We have arborvitas that surround the property, and it's like eight, they're eight, 10 feet high, so it's a very private setting. And you alluded to the fact that it does join Black Park Bay, and this has access down to that, which is an ideal situation for this property. You know, what's interesting is I think this property would be well-received by the inland northwest. I mean, look at the TV people here. I mean, I can't believe the amount of people that have called and asked about what is going on, and you guys here are kind of a testament to that as well. It's just a local, it's an inland northwest icon. I mean, it's a property that is, I mean, I'm sure Post Falls, if they think about it, is something they should be proud to have here. It's something that not a lot of cities have. We also believe that it would be a benefit to the city. You know, the amount of visitors that this would bring in in a year would be advantageous to businesses as a whole. Amazing, in the last nine years, the property virtually hasn't been used. In the same token, they paid over $1,005,000 in real estate taxes. That's a lot of money for something that is kind of underutilized. I think that's a good point. They don't, so with that, again, I think the highest and best use is for a bed and breakfast or some kind of event, something that you can share with the community. You know, we realize that the neighborhood has concerns over parking and traffic. As it was stated, that traffic is not a problem, but you do, the biggest concern probably is the traffic. Parking, we think we have taken care of. If we are successful in acquiring that, the Walz property, we have more than enough parking, and that will be out of sight. Traffic, there's three ways into this property. Last year, when we had the realtor event, we sent out letters to, I think, basically just people on Parkwood, because we figured that might be the most logical place to come into it. But there are three really ways to get in that, as you showed. You know, when you have big events, like weddings and things like that, in fact, bigger events, when the Perriers had it, cruise boats would come down, the people get off the cruise boats, they go up to the, and have their dinner and stuff, and then they go back in the cruise boat. So probably people didn't even notice that. So we anticipate that would be something that we'd utilize, not me, but whoever would take over this endeavor would utilize that as a source. People love coming down in the cruise boats and getting off on the water to the site. If we had big events, I think, I don't know if we need to do this, but something that was thrown out, that we could have a common area, we could pick people up and bus them to the site. You know, Perriers are concerned, they've been good neighbors, they want to do everything they can to mitigate and minimize any kind of impact that it would be on the neighborhood. And I'm sure working with the city will come up with some ideas for that. So, you know, when you have, if you do have large events and there's a lot of traffic, people don't always come at the same time, they don't always leave at the same time. So 100 cars might seem like a lot, but when they're coming at different times and leaving at different times, maybe you don't even notice it. As a pure bed and breakfast, you will, you know, something that might be like for small business events, you won't even notice the traffic. But I do, we do understand what your concerns are. So with that, I'm just, I'm open for questions, and we just hope you guys would approve this. I think it's something that the city of Post Falls, the community, can be very proud of, that can be shared with a lot of people. A lot of people want to see it. There's, I don't know, how do I get back to, I had one more picture I wanted to kind That is the entry. I don't know if people have ever had a chance to see it, but it really looks like a mini five-star hotel. When you walk through this place, it is something to behold. When they did this house, that gold up there, that's gold leaf painting. I mean, it's just something that people will go through, and they just gawk at what's there. It's amazing. So that's what we want to share. So do you have any questions?
Questions for Mr. Butler?
I think, again, just do you have any idea what the current parking is, or what the capacity is currently?
Can you show that one? There's another picture that. Just, maybe, that one. No. There, try that one right there. If you can see, there's a long driveway that comes in. We haven't ever done, we haven't done a site analysis as far as what's onsite parking. There's quite a few areas that we could create parking, but we don't want, I don't think anybody would take away what the property is, the characteristics of the property. That's why acquiring the Walz property would be ideal. But if I had to, there's quite a bit of areas onsite that we could have parking, but we haven't done a parking study.
Okay. Where would the, if we're looking at that, where would the parking that you're hoping to acquire actually be?
Right back in here.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
It's one acre, it's about 100 feet of frontage, that's about 500 feet deep, it'd be ideal. There's, you know, there's two accesses to this property, they're both gated. There's three accesses by roads to get this property. The main, it wouldn't be used in Parkwood, they'd be coming down off of, I forget the name of the street now, but to access that.
That River Park, maybe?
It's really ideally set up. What's that?
Plaza Drive, River, is that where the parking, that parking would be coming from?
Handy, yeah.
Yeah.
Handy would be one, but...
Well, I think Parkwood Place is probably the main, where originally, as a resident, it was probably came in on.
That was one of those.
Okay, so it would be the other one there with the little cul-de-sac, and I think that's Plaza Drive.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for applicant?
Yeah, I've got a couple.
Okay.
So that adjacent property that you're talking about, I think if my memory serves me right, there was a house there that burned down, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and it has not been rebuilt?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
No, there's a lot of junk on it right now. I mean, it needs to be cleaned up, which...
Okay. And I think, really, so in reading a lot of the public comments that were submitted in the staff report, there's a lot of talk about uses that are kind of above and beyond those that might be associated with a bed and breakfast, and more similar to those of a convention center or something like that. And one of the things in your narrative, it says that the concept would include uses like weddings, business events, but also says but not limited to. And I understand where the public might be a little concerned about that. Other than, and I know I'm putting you on the spot here, but other than the six items that you have listed there, is there anything that you can think of that would be included in the not limited to that we should know about that would, because it's one of those things where it's almost a little bit of an open door? And I can see where the general public next door or the community might be concerned that would morph into something beyond that of what you would consider as a bed and breakfast.
Well, the bed and breakfast, you know, permit gives you the access to have like weddings and things. I think weddings, I mean, the most calls I've gotten on is for like weddings. I've had businesses, I've had churches that want to use it for a seminar. I mean, I can't really think of anything other than that. Maybe some, the afternoons, maybe on a Sunday, maybe you'd have a wine social with a little band or something. I don't, I'm not trying to be...
Right. I'm just trying to get a flavor for the, you know, not limited to part.
Right. That's probably something we could work on with the city, I guess, to eliminate any confusion on that, but I can't think of anything else, really.
And just kind of a follow-on to that, if we were to look at a condition of approval that would limit the uses to those six that you had there, would that be objectionable?
I think that pretty good to cover it, yeah.
Okay.
You know. And again, we could work with the city on that to, so there wasn't any confusion.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Done? All right. Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you.
Public comment, we will start with those in favor.
None.
Those neutral.
None.
Complete transparency, just so that you guys are aware, there is a high probability that I may butcher one of your names. And if I do that, I apologize ahead of time. I apologize. In opposition, wishing to speak, Chris Greenfield. Chris, all right. And again, just so that you are aware, if you'll come up, state your name, address, and then you have four minutes.
I was hoping to go last. So I'm within the, I'm Chris Greenfield. Good evening. I'm within the 300 feet of the Amway House. I've lived in the general vicinity for 40 years, and I have two homes, one that's right near the Amway Mansion, and then one that's around the corner in River Park Plaza and Park, what's the other one? River Edition. My concern is legality. We have very strong CCNRs that prohibit businesses, and recently, there was a Supreme Court case. There was a mention that we have another bed and breakfast in the area, and he's permitted under a home occupation permit because the Supreme Court allowed it because he is under three bedrooms, no weddings. It has to look like a single-family resident, it cannot have external traffic on the streets and whatnot. And there are several cases through the Supreme Court that have said bed and breakfasts are not allowed in residential areas. Our CCNRs were called unambiguous, meaning there's no question as to, you know, that it's not ambiguous, that it says no business is pure and only a home occupation. The per years are familiar with this, because in 2004, they addressed the CCNRs, trying to make a change. And in order to make a change, according to the CCNRs, it says they have to have 75% of the owners agree with it. They have not done this. They have not come to the owners, they haven't asked our permission, and from what I've heard and rumors, none of us are going to say, yes, you can do this. I've been around for the tour buses that have come down there. I was around for this real estate deal that he talked about last summer. It's a nightmare. You can't get into your driveways, your mailboxes are blocked, and everybody does come at the same time. If you have a wedding that's slated for 4:00, they're not coming at different times, they're coming at 4:00, and they're staying late into the evening. We've had people that are drunk, we've had people throwing up on our yards, we've had garbage, we've had, like I said, blocking, and it's impossible to get down there. And I know that there's streets way beyond that have cars. I don't think it's reasonable to assume that the neighboring lot is going to be used for a 100-space parking lot in a single residential. And I know that the CCNRs in both are very strong, and there's a very strong homeowners in the adjacent property, because I think Perrier has four homes, four lots, excuse me, in our subdivision, and I think one in the other that's on Plaza. Most of, and I do believe only 10 parking spots are on the Amway property at the most. I've heard that from different. Anyway, like I said, I'm just more for legality-wise. I think that if the city approves this, they're going to be pretty much, you know, conspiring with Butler to have an illegal operation, and I think it could end up in another lawsuit. So, and I don't want to see taxpayers go for that, so hopefully. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Also in opposition, wishing to speak, Patricia Maureen Hanson. Again, just give us name and address, and you have four minutes.
Hi, my name's Patricia Maureen Hanson, and I live at 211 Parkwood Place. So I live next door to the mansion. And first of all, I want to say thank you to the men and women on the commission. This is a really tough job, and I'm so glad that you all live and work in this community and that I know you care, too. You're raising your families here just like all of us. And I just wanted to say thank you. And also thank you to the planner for all the work you did. You were really helpful when I came in to ask questions. One of the things that has, has been really wonderful living there, I've only been there for five years, is the per-years have been excellent neighbors. I've never met them or anything, but knowing and seeing their choice of a caretaker and his character and his family, it's, they've been a great part of our community. I feel like they've been really respectful of us as neighbors to give us proper notification when there's been events. And I think that's a touche to them, you know. But unfortunately, there's a Realtor, a local Realtor, that's main job is to sell property. So now, because it hasn't sold in nine years, he's coming up with a new way. I don't believe it's the per-year family's choice to operate a bed and breakfast. I certainly don't think that that's an occupation that they will be choosing to do. They're choosing to sell it. They've been trying to sell it for almost 10 years. So now Butler has come up with a way to perhaps make it be useful for something else, so that perhaps a foreign investor, someone from back east, someone with a lot of money that wants to invest in the Northwest. The Northwest is a growing hotspot in our country. So there's investors from all around looking for properties to scoop up like this. So as a resident, I have six grandchildren and three of them have learned to ride their bike on our street. It's a little dinky neighborhood street that happens to have a mansion at the end that we can't see, that has gates and bushes in front of it. And it's been a wonderful neighbor because they're never there, you know. And so I'm pretty concerned that the interest is only to sell it. It's not truly an interest in preserving historic anything in Post Falls, because that's not Post Falls history. Post Falls history is hardworking. People like me, all the people on our street are people that work every day for a living, or we might be retired by now, but pretty much blue collar, some, some semi-blue collar. But that's our history here in Post Falls. It's not somebody that came in from far away and had a bunch of money and built a big showcase and never used it. That's weird. It's not Post Falls. So to promote this as some sort of advantageous thing for our culture of Post Falls is rather preposterous, in my opinion. But I'm happy that we're having this public forum. And just like each of the commissioners, as you're making this decision, to just picture your street and picture your kids out there on bicycles and, you know, somebody watering the flowers, and then, and there's an event. And when you Google map and you use your GPS about how to get to their residence, it doesn't take you down Plaza at all. Whether you're coming from Spokane and Coeur d'Alene, feel free to Google it. It takes you Handy, Third, you come off Seltice, you can either go Bay Street, or it's Spokane Street to Third to Handy to Park and Parkwood. And both Park and Parkwood are 35-foot residential streets. So I don't think that they're built to handle this. But thank you for listening.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Also in opposition, wishing to speak, George Bobbitt.
George Bobbitt, 208 Parkwood Place. I live probably about, what, four or five houses down from the mansion. And yes, like Maureen said, they've been great neighbors. Aside from, you know, any event, it's been quiet. We've been there for two years. We love it. It's a nice, quiet neighborhood, backs up to the park. We came from Hayden, where we lived out on property. It was like the next best thing. I had a small house, a small yard, and I had a forest behind me that I didn't have to take care of. It was great. And it still is. And I don't want that to change. Because when they did have that event with all those Realtors, the street was wall-to-wall cars. Our neighbor comes home with his boat. It takes him 10 minutes to park it because there's so many cars there. The music, you know, great. It's, the house is behind a gate, it's behind walls. You can't see it. But you can't stop the sound from coming over. So if there's a big event, it spills into the neighborhoods. This is a neighborhood, not a convention center. A bed and breakfast, when I think of bed and breakfast, it's a small little place, like our neighbor, Eric. It's not hotel. When you look at that, you think hotel, not bed and breakfast. So it's going to be a huge impact on us with traffic. You can, I understand she did a great job with the ordinances and all that. That's all numbers. Those are equations. And that's, there's a purpose for that. But again, think about it, as Maureen said, your family. It's your neighborhood. How does that affect you, your kids, your friends, your neighbors? It's not just an equation. It's real life. And this is going to be a huge impact, especially if it takes off. If it really takes off, it's going, I guarantee you, that's the one guarantee you can have with the bed and breakfast here, is that it will impact us and not in a positive way. You can say, we can have this bed and breakfast, and it's going to bring all this, this money and stuff to the city. You can't guarantee that. And that's what I want you guys to think about. That's the concern. It's us, it's the neighborhood, it's the families, it's the children, not necessarily the city. And I know we have to take that into account to some degree, but we are the city. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, also in opposition, wishing to speak, Leonard, is it Benis?
Yes.
I don't know that I've ever gotten four in a row right, so it's great.
Good job.
Thank you.
My name is Leonard Benis, and I reside at 206 South Parkwood Place in Post Falls. 26 years ago, my wife and I purchased a house on Parkwood Place. One of the main reasons for the purchase was the quiet residential neighborhood it is in. Now, the City of Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission is looking to change our quiet residential neighborhood into a hot commercial area. This special use permit request from the owners of 216 South Parkwood Place is a sales ploy generated from John Butler from Century 21, the current Realtor for the per-year family. Since his property has been on the market for almost a decade as a residential listing and has not sold, they are now trying to sell it as a commercial venture. If the special use permit is granted, neither the per-years nor the Realtor will have to deal with the ramifications this action will have on our area, but I and my surrounding neighbors will. The increased traffic and noise pollution from an event center, as well as the possible negative impact on our property values, is only a few of the reasons that I say, please, don't allow this to happen to our quiet, family-friendly neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next wishing to speak in opposition, Kathleen Nowak?
Real plus, Noak.
Okay, all right.
My name is Kathleen Nowak. I also live on Parkwood Place. Speak at a similar level as my neighbors. We purchased the, the residence on Parkwood Place about a year ago and used a good portion of our retirement savings to do so. One of the things that drew us to that neighborhood is the idyllic quality of Post Falls and being so close to the river and Black Bay Park. I feel very strongly that the, the concerns that have been expressed here are addressing the parking lot and the cars, which, within this last year, the Realtor event that happened inundated the neighborhood with noise and drunk people and cars. And so if the cars are taken care of, we could take that off the table. But the noise along the river doesn't just impact our neighborhoods. It impacts all along the river, not just us. You can go and sit in Black Bay Park, which is this lovely natural parking, this lovely natural area for the whole public of Post Falls to go and have quiet, natural space, something that's at premium at this point in time. We sit by the river, and there's a man on the river who plays one single electric guitar. And it is audible along the entire river. You hear it everywhere. Clear up in our neighborhood as well. I don't think that this can be considered a bed and breakfast. You know, I've told my husband many times since we've been there, it looks like a hotel. And then when we got the paperwork that said that they wanted to put in this establishment there, we went, oh, God. It will change everything. Property values are a consideration. It's a concern for us, what this would do to the neighborhood, to our property values. I have questions about the code under which this is being proposed. And I hope that the council will, and I know they will, look at that very carefully to see if this fits in that. Our neighborhood is, like Maureen was saying, there's eight or so homes on that street. And it has been the main entrance into, into the Amway Mansion. And I'm, I'm very concerned to know whether or not that, will it actually be, end up being used, or will it be closed? The impact of 120 cars, 120 parking spaces, it can't be said that that's not going to impact our neighborhood, because that neighborhood is closed off. The river's on one side, Black Bay Park is on another, we're on a cul-de-sac. That whole area right there is very, very quiet. There's not very much traffic that comes through there. And it makes it a lovely place to raise children, to be retired, as my husband and I are. And... There was a question that addressed the limited use of the property, that it may extend to other things than what are mentioned. And if by some reason this does pass, please consider closing that door, so that there are, nothing else can be used that's not mentioned in there, or that we know what those uses are prior to it happening. So please, keep our neighborhood quiet and residential and for what we purchased it for, and keep our property values intact. We appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other? Okay, then that would give us the opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant.
Well, like I mentioned initially, that we, we knew that the concerns were parking and, and traffic. I heard from pretty much everybody, the parking concerns, like from the event we had, and it was, you know, that was impacting your neighborhood. That's why we sent letters out, kind of let you know what was going to happen. But in, in the parking, I don't think is really a concern, because we'll have everything onsite. So I hope you realize that. And traffic wasn't brought up too much. Noise, I, you know, that, I, I'm a little concerned about some of the comments. I, I don't live in the neighborhood. I know that the event was from like five to nine o'clock. Alcohol was limited, so I don't know that, when I was there, I didn't see anybody that was out of, out of hand. So limitations like, you know, restrictions, maybe we, if we're going to have a band or a wedding or something, maybe we, you'd limit the, that, that, that event to maybe like eight o'clock or nine o'clock in the evening or something like that, I guess, you know. But we thought it was run really, really well. And it didn't have any complaints from anybody, so, but I, like I said, I don't, I don't live there. So I think that's all. I mean, the parking, I think the parking was one of the biggest issues you guys were talking about. I think we do have that addressed. So any, any questions you guys have? I...
Any questions this round?
I don't.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a quick question for staff.
I was going to say, go ahead. You too.
Warren, with regards to the CCNRs. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that CCNRs are more of a civil issue versus our planning commission, under the purview of our planning commission. Is that correct?
That's, excuse me. That is correct. We are not entitled to enforce private conditions between property owners. In fact, looking at our state code under the lineage Planning Act 676535, the only thing that we can consider as a planning commission are approval criteria that are adopted and placed in our ordinance. The CCNR restrictions aren't in our ordinance, so we can't enforce those at this point. It's really, if it, if this truly does violate the CCNRs, the other residents would be the ones who would be empowered to try to enjoin that activity.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so those, and those criteria are A, B, C, and D in the staff report, is that correct?
Those are the items listed for the staff.
Those four, okay.
Those are the only things that we can consider.
Okay. Any other question for staff or applicant? None? Okay, go ahead and close the hearing, and then open up for commissioner comment. Mr. Kimmel?
So I'll start here. So as Warren said, we have four criteria which we have to evaluate to make sure that, to see whether or not this proposal fits those criteria. And if the answer is that it fits the criteria, then the answer is yes. And if the answer is that it doesn't fit those criteria, then the answer is no. But generally speaking, we also get, have the responsibility to tell the applicant how they can meet the, those five, four criteria. So for the edification of the public here, those criteria, first one is whether the implementation of the special use would or would not conform to the purposes of the applicable zoning district. And based on the staff report, as well as my review of the code and the application, I think it does meet, does conform to the purposes of the zoning district. Criteria B is whether the proposed is in this, an allowable special use as established in the chapter of the zoning district, and it is. It was on the table. C is whether the proposed use will be compatible with health, safety, and welfare of the public, and with the land uses in the vicinity of the proposal. That's probably the one that's probably most up for debate tonight. And then whether the proposed will or will not comply with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan. And the staff report shows the goals and policies that are supported. So it really comes back to C, health, safety, welfare of the public, and whether land uses, it's compatible with the land uses in the vicinity. I fully recognize that traffic is always an issue. It seems like it's every, every time we're, we hear a contentious proposal, it's about traffic. We have on staff at City Post Falls, a pretty darn good traffic engineer. His name is Rob Paulus. And he did a pretty thorough evaluation. And he says that, you know, he's an expert on it. And he says that the streets have capacity. Now, that doesn't mean it's not going to impact the neighborhood and the fact that there will be one car or 100 cars or 500 more cars that go up and down the street at some particular time. I get it. I understand. I live at the end of a cul-de-sac. I enjoy less traffic than other people on my cul-de-sac, on my street. I get it. I understand that there's an impact. But that doesn't necessarily mean that there's a health, safety, and welfare issue. The street's designed to handle that capacity. And as long as people are driving safely and not against the law, which is a whole nother issue, if they're drunk driving and things like that, please call the police. But beyond that, we have a noise ordinance in the City of Post Falls. So if there's people in violation of the noise ordinance, we have police officers who can come in and enforce that. So from what I heard tonight, based on the conditions of approval that the staff has, where they talk about mitigating parking, which is a big deal. where they talk about mitigating parking, which is a big deal. So, I mean, I, I get it. And so one of the, one of the requirements, one of the conditions of approval, says to limit all the parking to on-street, or off-street parking, so that, you know, on their own property, or along the frontage of their property, and the cul-de-sac there, at the end of their, at the end of the street, so they're not leaking out onto other people's properties. The other condition, I think, that would be appropriate, would be number five, which I would propose to be number five, if we were to consider it, would be to limit the events to those specifically, or the allowed events to those specifically listed in the application. I believe there are six. Those would be weddings, business events, private parties, wine and cheese socials, family gatherings and reunions, and of course, bed and breakfast. And, that's it. Those are my comments.
Mr. Stephenson?
I think where I'm hung up is on item C, with the, the health, safety, and welfare. I just, you know, what happened with mitigating the parking, that seemed to be everybody's big thing. How often would this property be used? I mean, you had the one event last year, but if you're talking weddings, and, and even outside of this scope, you know, how do you limit a wedding, saying, hey, sorry, wedding's over at 8:30? You know, I've been to plenty of weddings, they don't, just over at 8:30. But that's out of the scope. But with the parking, I just don't see how you can even limit it to on, onsite, without going into the neighborhoods, and then it's going to have multiple times over the summer months, or whenever these, these activities are, you know. If, you know, I think we, we had to, we could, you know, limit the uses, and, like Ray said, and, and then you got your, the sound and the noise, even if you have an ordinance, it's still a distraction. Yeah, I don't know. I think the safety, if you're parking on the street, you got a lot of cars on the street, if you got family and kids, I got two kids, we see cars go by, and you're talking extra 200 or 300 cars at a certain event, multiple times during the year. What effect does that have on our neighborhood? That's kind of where I'm hung up at it.
Nancy?
Well, I think this is obviously a unique property, and it's, probably, obviously, it's hard to sell it as a single-family home. It's, it's a very unique property, and it's beautiful. And I think personally, as a bed and breakfast, I think it would be nice. It probably, they could probably squeeze in adequate parking for that. But I just really don't believe that, as it sits, it can, it can hold business events and weddings and private parties, and with, and I'm not sure what it is, but 12 parking spaces, or even if it's 15, that, that really only allows for very, very small events. And that's, that's not business events and weddings, and, so that's my concern. As it sits, the parking just is not adequate for, for those types of uses. That's, I can, I can sympathize on some other points, but that's really my issue.
Mr. Bishop?
I think, along the lines with everyone else, my biggest thing, I maybe want to see a condition where we have no on-street parking, if that's possible. So it would have to be off-street parking. I think that, that would be my biggest add to this, as well as requiring that the land be purchased prior to approving a special purpose, so that there would be adequate land to add the parking.
Mr. Latham?
I'll try not to be as long as Ray.
Sorry.
I do have a lot, I do have a lot of comments.
We know what we're getting ourselves into. It's fine.
It's, it's an amazing house, and you have somebody who owns it, and there's, well, it's not, it's not historic, I don't think, from the 90s, from the late 90s, or whatever, but, but, but there's a part of me that, that says that if there's these people that do want to share it and open the door to, so that other people can spend a night there, or something, that is somewhat appealing. However, having said that, and I guess as compared to an exclusive owner that just has big gates, like you see in other towns and things like that, so that makes sense. To me, where I'm hung up on is a lot what you said, but a bed and breakfast is very different by nature than an event venue center, where there's wedding receptions, and bands, and live music, and things like that. And I think we're talking about a very wide spectrum here, and that's where I'm having a hard time getting my arms wrapped around that. You know, I don't know if it's still there, but that blue house that backs up to Black Bay, and that, that was 20, 25 years ago, or something. There was a bed and breakfast there for a while. I have no idea if it's still there. But that didn't seem like a problem, because it was a bed and breakfast, and there's a lot of bed and breakfasts in rural streets, out in the country, and in town, and all, all kinds of mixed-match places. And I think it's because it acts and it feels like home, and the visitors that are there are maybe there for one night, but they quietly dwell, and I think that's the difference. So you get the somewhere in between, as you get some of these family reunions and show social gatherings, which are lower noise and smaller groups, how do you define that? Then you get these larger events, like bigger parties and wedding receptions, which connotate more noise and late night, and drinking, and lots of vehicles. So do you see what I mean? And that's, that's where I don't, I don't know how to get my arms wrapped around that without the, without giving conditions of, that the bed and breakfast does make sense to me. I think it is compatible, but maybe there's a limit of occupants that can be in that house at any one time, of 50 occupants, or something like that, which would be radically less than 300 people there, or 500 people. Or a number of cars, or something like that. And that's, that's where I'm at, I think, on this decision, and I, I really, that's where I was at when I was reading through these notes a few days ago, that that struck me pretty strongly. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, I don't fault anyone on this, because we have very limited space to be able to conduct, conduct weddings and do business events. The other thing I look at is that I'm quite positive that this would not turn into a frat house, and every single weekend, there would be 500 drunk college-age kids that are running around and throwing up on the streets. I don't see that happening. I've been to weddings where alcohol isn't served. So I get that piece of it. But the reality of it is, is that I personally feel like we've gotten ahead of ourselves a little bit. If this parking, the reserved parking, if the parking was already purchased and locked in, I think we're in a whole different conversation, because then we know the off-site parking is taken care of. I think with some of the, the uses, some refining, at this point, I think there needs to be some additional work that needs to be done, before it's really presented and we can really take a hard look at it. So to me, I don't know that I could approve it the way that it stands right now, until there's not a little bit more work done. But that, just my opinion.
You know, Mark, when you were talking, something popped into my head, and it was that, a year ago, or whenever that big Realtor event happened, that was at the invite of the private owner. And that event happened without a permit, without any sort of regulation, clogged up the neighborhood, and they could do it again tomorrow.
True.
They could have a party at their house, they could have it every weekend. They could do a lot, they could throw it on Airbnb, rent it out for the weekend, and someone could have a wedding there. And there's a lot of things that could probably happen. I think this might be an opportunity for us to put, to address the concerns of the neighborhood, and to require the parking, and to put a cap on it, and to keep them from going kind of willy-nilly, and maybe address everything that, or try to address the best we can, the concerns of the neighborhood, to keep, you know, so, I mean, that, that exact event, the Realtor event that happened last year, wouldn't be able to happen like that next year, if we were to prove that with some conditions that required all on-street, or all off-street parking. They'd have to bus people in, even if they didn't get the other, the other parking, they'd have to, they'd have to do all that. And that's, you know, but it's, I think it's an opportunity for us to be able to look at it and go, well, okay, they can do it now, kind of, and it's just they're not going to make any money on it. I don't know if they're really worried about making money on the property. Maybe not. I don't know. But from the standpoint of, you know, being able to limit and control what they can, they can do there, I think that our best opportunity to do it is by adding conditions.
I think there's a way to be able to do it and do it right, absolutely. I guess my question, Warren, is to you, is that, it's my understanding, we could not put forth a condition that says, nothing move forward unless that, unless that piece of property is purchased. Is that correct?
So, let me back up just a second. Under both our city code and state code, when you're approving a special use permit, you're allowed to go beyond what you would normally require in your city code. You can also have conditions that would, as it's referenced in the staff report, minimize adverse impacts on other developments. So I do think you could have a condition that essentially says you need to have all of your parking onsite, even though that's beyond what our, excuse me, our city code would otherwise require. I'm not sure, I'm comfortable with a condition that they have to acquire the other property before they can move forward.
Right.
That's, that's, gets to be a little bit weird. I'm not, I mean, we're essentially interfering in a potential purchase and sale between, you know, other parties that aren't here tonight. We don't know what their position is. We have no way of knowing how interested they are in selling, so I'm not sure that that's a place I would be comfortable going.
Right.
But you generically could have conditions to limit the intensity of the site, to serve that purpose of minimizing adverse impact. Roy, Commissioner Kimball alluded to this earlier, if, in the event of a denial, we do have an obligation to explain to the applicant what, if anything, they could do to reach a, a different outcome. And sort of, as Commissioners Davis and Latham alluded to, that would be one way to speak to, if you acquire that parking area and come back, that would be one way to allay some of our concerns.
Warren, could we add a occupancy limit?
I think you could. I'm not sure that you have the evidence in the record tonight to help you do that, because I don't know that we have anything in the record that tells us how much is too much. We know how many rooms there are, but beyond that, we don't really have a good way, based on the evidence that I heard come in tonight, for you to be able to craft that.
Well, the other thing, kind of, it's kind of adding to that, as Mr. Butler had talked about, that parking analysis or study hadn't been done. And I don't know if that would be an unduly difficult thing to do. It's on acreage, and of course, it's beautifully landscaped, from what I can see on the photographs and things like that, so you don't want to make a sea of parking lot. I understand that. But it seems like, thinking about how you weave parking in and out of spaces and things, you could probably add some parking to that area on the flat at the top. I know half the site's probably the 45 down to the water. But I guess my, my point being is that, I don't know if you can require that they buy the lot next door, but maybe you could make, we could make a requirement that says, for every occupant, there is 1.5 parking spaces, or something, you know, what, and John, maybe whatever, whatever residential, residential multifamily use, I think it's 1.5 spaces per occupant, and you set that as a, an occupant and a parking limit, or something like that, maybe. Well, I don't know if I'm explaining that right, but...
Yeah. It sounds like there's basically two veins. One, it's either denied with the understanding of, go back, clean things up, look at the parking, and come back to us, or is that we look at putting in some stipulations, and one of those would be no off, or off-street parking that, you know, because I've been to events to where you are shuttled in and out. I mean, I think that's kind of what you were alluding to, wasn't it?
It was.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we had a condition for no on-street parking, the motivation from the landowner is going to be to get onsite parking, or bus people in?
Mm-hmm. Okay. With that being said, unless there's no more conversation...
Is it motion time?
I would entertain a motion.
I'll let one fly, and we'll see how it goes. Regarding to special use permit 0001-2019, the, what do we call in this thing?
River City Bed and Breakfast Specials?
River City Bed and Breakfast. I'd move to approve special use permit, finding that it meets the criteria A, B, C, and D as found in the staff report. Adopting conditions, I believe they are one through four. Amending condition four to require that all parking be accommodated onsite for events. And, and also add a condition five that will limit the associated uses on the site to those six shown in the applicant's narrative, being weddings, business events, private parties, wine and cheese socials, family gatherings and reunions, and a bed and breakfast. That's it.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
May I ask a question? Does that, do we need to add the no on-street parking?
Yeah, that was the...
Oh, did you?
I amended condition four to require no on-street parking.
Yeah, I second.
Okay, it's been motioned a second vote. Roll call.
Stephenson?
No.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Latham?
Uh, no.
Bishop?
Yes.
Hampi?
No.
That brings us to the second public hearing of the evening, but I think before we... Go ahead, sir.
We'd need to have a motion for denial.
Oh. Okay, so I guess I need to entertain a motion.
I move to deny River City Bed and Breakfast supplemental use permit 0001-2019, finding that it does not meet the approval criteria in Post Falls Municipal Code 18-20-070, as outlined in our deliberations, and directs staff to prepare a reasoned decision. And I, my, my reasoning, and I think our reasoning for that, was that we just need it to be cleaned up a little bit. We need some, the parking issues and the use issues to just be cleaned up and, and brought back to us, so...
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Hampi?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
No.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Okay. Before we move into the Coleman Acres Major Subdivision Amendment, we're going to take a five-minute recess. a five-minute recess.
So, I guess I don't know exactly how far the subdivision got through, if the plat was recorded and completed.
It was not.
So, yeah, then they'd probably, if it's not a final plat, then they could probably just proceed. They would, they do have to, because it's a smart code product, they have to amend the regulating plan, so that that piece would need to be done, because the prior subdivision was tied into the regulating plan, the infill area neighborhood plan. A lot of words in that title.
Sure, okay.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. Applicant?
Yeah, I would actually. I want to balance between that, and I think it's a good way to... Okay. Good evening, Commissioners, and everybody. Appreciate you coming out this evening. My name is Matthew Affana. I live on 848 North Chase Road. I'm also the owner with my brother, Polar Company. And so anyway, what we have here is, originally, when we bought the property, it was approved for, with this preliminary plat. And if you notice, you know, we had four plexes in there with duplexes, and it really wasn't conducive with the product that was originally designed here with the neighbors at all. We did the subdivision to the south at Columbia Estates, and realistically, putting four plexes in there and the way the roads, it just, it just didn't fit with the neighbors to the north. So what we did was, we went back to the drawing board, redesigned this to this. And again, like John had mentioned, or Jamie, that SC4, it's got a minimum of eight units per acre. So what we tried to do was come up with something that I feel would mix in with the R1 or the SC3 to the north, and to the R1 to the south, and make a transition from the north to the south. So what we did was, you know, all the lots to the north are all, we're going to build, you know, and not that I need to explain the product, but I might as well just tell you what we're going to do here, and that is, we're going to build resident, you know, single-family units to the north. And then to the south, we're going to have a mix of duplexes and single-family residences on those lots to the south. So what we're asking here today is to increase the density eight more, eight units. I don't think that's a huge jump at all, considering the fact that, you know, technically, yeah, just like Ray had mentioned or asked about, and was confirmed, that technically, yeah, we could do apartments. But I live in this neighborhood. You know, a lot of my, the guys that work for our company, live in this, live in this surrounding neighborhoods, and it just didn't fit. So we tried to go back and design something that would actually fit and work, and I think it'd be conducive with the neighbors around it and surrounding areas. So I'd appreciate an approval on this request, and so we can move on and get this thing built. So, any questions?
Questions for applicant? None? No? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a comment. Those in favor?
None.
Those neutral?
None.
Those opposed?
No, it doesn't.
I'll trade you. Okay. In opposition...
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Stay tuned.
I think they should have some Super Bowl commercials.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the planning and zoning meeting back to order, and we're going to move on with the second public hearing. Coleman Acres Major Subdivision. Staff to present.
I am here to present the Coleman Acres Subdivision, case file SUBD-1-2019. The owner is Polar Company LLC, and the applicant is Dobler Engineering. The project description: The applicant has been requested to amend and revise the Dobson Acres subdivision, that is approximately three and a half acres, which was approved as an 18-lot residential subdivision consisting of seven single-family products, eight duplexes, and three fourplexes, for a total of 35 units. The applicant is proposing to replace the subdivision with the proposed Coleman Acres to create 43 mixed-product residential-style homes consisting of 18 single-family lots and 10 lots intended to contain no more than a total of 25 multifamily-style units in the smart code SC4 zone. The Planning and Zoning Commission is being asked to review the proposal to determine that the subdivision meets the requirements of the ordinance and to make a reasoned decision of approval, conditional approval, or deny the subdivision. The subject site is hatched in red. As you can see, it is right along West Pole Line Avenue, and running north and south is Chase Road. The current land use is vacant. The current zoning, it is currently zoned SC4, smart code. The surrounding land use is residential. The water is provided by East Green Acres Irrigation District. Refer to your staff report for the will serve letter from them. The sewer is provided by the City of Post Falls, and the proposed density is 12.15 units per acre. Part of the subdivision review criteria is, one, to, the definite provision has been made for a water supply system that is adequate in terms of quantity and quality for the type of subdivision proposed. As I just referenced, refer to your staff report for the East Green Acres Irrigation District will serve letter. That adequate provisions have been made for the public sewage system, and that the existing municipal system can accommodate the proposed sewer flows. The sewer system is Post Falls, so we do have capacity to serve that subdivision. That the proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. I believe that Pole Line and Chase are both minor arterials. This is the new proposed Coleman Acres subdivision. As you can see, to the north, there's 18, that's the proposed 18 single-family residences. And then you've got four lots here and six lots here, which were the reference multifamily type product that they were intending there. You can see right here that with the new street coming in, that it serves to add flow and connectivity for the subdivision as well. The remaining subdivision criteria are as follows. All areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards, have been identified, there have been unidentified, and that the area proposed for subdivision is zoned for the proper use, and it is zoned SC4, so that would have the capacity for this subdivision. The surrounding zone is all residential. The future land use is designated all residential as well. The developer has made adequate plans to ensure that the community will bear no more than its fair share of cost to provide services. This is done through the building permit process and through impact fees. This was the original Dobson Acres, what they had submitted. You can see that it looks like there might be some thin lots over here, kind of a T-street right here, and then a knuckled loop right there. And then, once again, this is their revision. These are all the agencies routed, and we received comments from the Post Falls Police Department, and they remain neutral on this request. And once again, here is the subject site, along Pole Line and Chase. Do you have any questions?
Would you do me a favor? Would you go back to the zoning map?
Future or current?
Yeah, right there. Okay, so it neighbors R1, but also smart code, okay, SC3.
SC3 above, SC4 to the south.
Right.
And Jamie, can you help me remember, when did that become smart code? Was that when it was annexed into the city?
You know, I can't answer that, John. Do you know when that was?
That was all part of the MICA Acres annexation. It was, it was an infill regulating plan that accompanied it, and it didn't detail out the SC4. It left it as a future development, of which then that later became Dobson Acres.
Okay. So even, so it's been like that for a while, and that's why when it was Dobson Acres, it was that higher density?
Right, and I would like to note that the SC4, other than the yellow areas, I think we're accustomed to a max density. Smart code goes by a minimum density. So in the SC4, it's a minimum of eight dwelling units per acre. So that's how they're meeting the density performance standards in the SC4 by the, both proposals, the Dobson Acres and this proposal.
Is there a maximum density in SC4?
There is not.
Okay. So, they could put multifamily, they could put apartments there right now if they wanted to, right?
That is a permitted use within the SC4.
Without even a public hearing?
Because of the Dobson Acres and the change, it would still require an amendment to Dobson Acres, because that was part of the infill.
Couldn't just vacate the preliminary plat and just do what they wanted?
Warren's got to throw it around over here.
So I guess I don't know exactly how far the subdivision got through, if the plat was recorded and completed.
It was not.
So, yeah, then they'd probably, if it's not a final plat, then they could probably just proceed. They would, they do have to, because it's a smart code product, they have to amend the regulating plan, so that piece would need to be done, because the prior subdivision was tied into the regulating plan, the infill area neighborhood plan. A lot of words in that title.
Sure, okay. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. Applicant?
Matt, do you want to give us a second?
Yeah, I would actually.
Okay. Which one are you on?
I want to balance between that and, I think it's a good way to... Okay. Good evening, Commissioners, and everybody. Appreciate you coming out this evening. My name is Matthew Affana. I live on 848 North Chase Road. I'm also the owner with my brother, Polar Company. And so anyway, what we have here is, originally, when we bought the property, it was approved for, with this preliminary plat. And if you notice, you know, we had four plexes in there with duplexes, and it really wasn't conducive with the product that was originally designed here with the neighbors at all. We did the subdivision to the south at Columbia Estates, and realistically, putting four plexes in there and the way the roads, it just, it just didn't fit with the neighbors to the north. So what we did was, we went back to the drawing board, redesigned this to this. And again, like John had mentioned, or Jamie, that SC4, it's got a minimum of eight units per acre. So what we tried to do was come up with something that I feel would mix in with the R1 or the SC3 to the north, and to the R1 to the south, and make a transition from the north to the south. So what we did was, you know, all the, all the lots to the north are all, we're going to build, you know, and then, not that I need to explain the product, but I might as well just tell you what we're going to do here, and that is, we're going to build resident, you know, single-family units to the north, and then to the south, we're going to have a mix of duplexes and single-family residences on those lots to the south. So what we're asking here today is to increase the density eight more, eight units. I don't think that's a huge jump at all, considering the fact that, you know, technically, yeah, just like Ray had mentioned or asked about, and was confirmed, that technically, yeah, we could do apartments. But I live in this neighborhood. You know, a lot of my, the guys that work for our company, live in this, live in the surrounding neighborhoods, and it just didn't fit. So we tried to go back and design something that would actually fit and work, and I think it'd be conducive with the neighbors around it and surrounding areas. So I'd appreciate an approval on this request, and so we can move on and get this thing built. So, any questions?
Questions for applicant? None?
No.
Nope? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a comment. Those in favor?
None.
Those neutral?
None.
Those opposed?
No, it doesn't.
I'll trade you. Okay. In opposition...
.................................................................................
Okay. In opposition, not wishing to speak, and again, I apologize if I butcher your name, you can throw it out and correct me, but Mark, is it Orata?
Orata.
Orata, okay. Too many cars, too much noise, low-end housing in a high-end neighborhood. Please keep original zoning as planned. Harlan Schleckner?
Schlecker.
Schlecker. This should remain a single-family occupancy. It is being inundated with contractors trying to turn it up into another Spokane. Tamra Bolivop? Help me?
No, it's two.
Bowville, perfect. Tammy, Tamra Bowville, too much traffic on Pole Line and Chase, half-acre lots in the area, and they want to put thirty-seven housings on four-acre parcel. Gerald Morrison, also in opposition, not wanting to speak. No parking, no increase in density. I do have one, Gary Alvarado, that you put yes and no. Do you want to speak or do you not?
No, sir.
No, sir? Okay. I'm in opposition of these amendments due to the increased traffic and type of houses proposed. I believe the rest of you are in opposition that do want to speak, so we'll go ahead and start. Bob Flowers, you are first.
Good evening, Commissioners. How many homes can you put on an acre? Are we going to start going higher and higher and higher? Forty-something homes on five-and-a-half acres? That's insane. Those, those so-called single-family units on the north end, those lots have to be so thin that if your neighbor flushed his toilet, you'd hear it. I mean, there's got to be a limit someplace. We all know that the smart code is on its way out. The city has tried it. It hasn't worked worth a darn. And we really need to get these prior-approved parcels changed over, but it's, that's just insane. And to put that many units in a five-and-a-half-acre parcel, where are the people going to park? An average single-family home has approximately two-point-five cars. If they have any kids, they probably have more cars. Where are they supposed to be parking? Those lots are so small, they ain't got room for driveways. They don't, and then you're putting multifamily in front of them. And we all know from prior experience with the apartment complexes, they have friends, they have relatives, everybody comes over, they visit. Where does their, where's their parking? On the street. That, that smaller area does not have the space for the amount of people that could fill that unit. I'm sorry, I know that the smart codes have a minimum amount of units you can build per acre instead of a maximum, but this, this is just, this is ridiculous. I'm sorry. I'm just completely against this. It's just packing people in like sardines and this isn't Post Falls living. This is something you'd see in Seattle or Portland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Next up in opposition wishing to speak, Lana DeVall? DeVall?
Chairman Davis, while she's coming up, we did have someone sign up a little bit late that wants to be neutral, so maybe you can call them next after this one.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for showing up. My name is Lana DeVall and I live at ten eighty-three West Wheatland. We moved here three years ago with the idea that we had a beautiful home and it was a single-family dwelling and that was the reason that we bought there was because it was a single-family home. We're seeing a horrendous amount of homes being built, but they're all single-family homes. They're not duplexes, they're not fourplexes, they're not condos, whatever it is that they're building. We have fourteen new houses that are going to be coming in on Wheatland within this year, I'm assuming. Three of them have already been sold. I wonder how many of those people actually know that they're going to be building these things right in their backyard. I represent the Northern Plains First Edition and to most of us, our Planning and Zoning Commission should be considering the needs and issues of the local areas. Urban planning is done to make meaningful use of designated spaces. It should exist towards a common sense approach to centrally accessible roads and maintaining the integrity of existing communities. This should be our goal in planning. Addressing the rumor circulating that Coleman Acres will be, will be a retirement senior community, which is what some of us have heard, we believe that if they are building two stories on the eighteen units that are in the back, they will be upstairs, downstairs. These are not seniors and our seniors are not being taken care of because our seniors are coming here retiring, wanting to have a good place to settle down and not worry about having a lot of traffic. The developer can promise anything they want you to hear if it aids them in removing objections to their goals. Sadly to say, if I don't see it in writing, I will, if I don't see, excuse me, if I don't see it in writing, we will write it off as, as a probable pipe dream. If a developer is planning on above fifty-year development, excuse me, if a developer is planning an above fifty-years development, first of all, the units would be single-story. And two-story density should be a nature to accommodate for easy access of emergency vehicles. We're talking about a very thin road. You've got trucks that may have to come in there because of a fire. Do they have access to get in and out of there? I have spoke to a couple of people that do not believe that, who were on the fire department. Let's see. Like it or not, when there are older folks, this becomes a real necessity for emergency vehicles to be getting in and out of there. As proposed, Coleman Acres is about the least elderly-friendly development that you can imagine. Most of the people in this area being addressed have bought single-family homes for a reason. It is a single-family home area. We don't believe that the development sees that as a problem. It will create more traffic in an area that already has a huge problem. It is not going to accommodate, it is, it should not accommodate multifamily dwellings. And I only have one question for the developer, if I may address him.
You can ask the question and he can address it on his rebuttal.
Okay, so my question to this point is, if the developer was in this area, would he want something that they're developing now or wanting to develop to be right in his backyard? That's my question to him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We did have one individual that came in, neutral wishing to speak, Chris. You want to come up? I'm going to let you pronounce your last name.
My name's Chris Treebossa. I'm speaking in neutral of the proposed project. I reside at one-two-one West Twenty-Second Street in Post Falls. I'm just east of the proposed project. Just like Matt was saying, I live right next to it, his employees live right next to it. I would just ask the council to consider the existing neighbors around us and the existing neighbor on the northwest corner of Pole Line and Chase. Maybe consider a privacy, six-foot privacy fence around his property. And I know he has campers there and maintains some, maybe a driveway approach where he can back his campers back into where he has currently done it for the last ten years. Other than that, I have nothing else to say.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Next in opposition wishing to speak, Robin Neet.
I realize my penmanship must be bad. It's Robin Neer. So I appreciate you, your willingness to listen and I had my speech all prepared and I keep thinking of new things I'd like to add. And I am going to mention that we just got back from Kentucky and Virginia and I went to my grandson's softball practice and I was standing there at the end admiring a row of trees and I went over to read the sign and my son came over and he goes, Mom, what are you looking at? I said, a conservation belt. Wow, what a great idea. Maybe I should share this with the City of Post Falls. Wouldn't it be nice if we could do that here instead of piling homes one on top of another on small acreages? I did want to add that I was, I was getting eye candy on my vacation because I knew what was coming. When we moved to Northern Plains subdivision three years ago, we were told by several individuals that the field directly behind us would be developed into single-family homes similar to ours. Because we had always lived in the country, we were concerned about losing our peace and quietness. The legal term is called quiet enjoyment. In time, we have become accustomed to the train sounds, more traffic and general noise, et cetera. Our homes are in close proximity to each other, but it is a tolerable lifestyle. So I find out about this high-density housing development proposal while we're on vacation and at first I thought it was a joke. I looked at the text I received and I looked at the diagram and I thought, what in the world is someone thinking to do this to us? And contrary to what the builder says, it's a bad idea, it's a bad fix for our area. Forty-three townhouses and single-family homes on three-point-five-four acres? That's insanity. I honestly cannot believe it's even a consideration. We're talking a hundred to a hundred-and-twenty-five or a hundred-and-fifty new people squeezed onto three-and-a-half acres. It's just, doesn't make sense at all. Quiet enjoyment isn't just something that everyone would like to have, but it's actually our right under our legal system. Private nuisance, the term private nuisance, which is what a high-density housing development is when it abuts an established neighborhood like ours, that can be considered a civil wrong. The law recognizes that homeowners, this is a definition now from the freedom dictionary.com online, the law recognizes that, quote, "homeowners or those in rightful possession of land have the right to the unimpaired condition of the property and to reasonable comfort in its occupation." Am I proposing to keep that field directly south of us empty and undeveloped? Of course not. We know that people want to move to Idaho and everybody wants a piece of it, but this proposal is a bad one. That, and it directly affects and impedes our quality of life and the quiet enjoyment of every homeowner and every family member in our subdivision and the adjacent subdivisions. It is my understanding that zoning boards were created to protect citizens and to enact restrictions of property uses in specific locations. This is how public nuisances are prohibited and how the quality of our neighborhood can be maintained and I plead enjoyed. So I really implore you to respect and uphold our right to quiet enjoyment. I feel it's threatened, I'm very, very concerned about it and we have a lot of legitimate concerns, but the, the lack of quiet enjoyment, I think, is right at the top of my list. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next in opposition wishing to speak, Eric Clemmison.
I'd like to use that. Okay. And if you could put that zoning map back up there, please. My name is Eric Clemmison. I live at eight-eight, eight-eight-zero West Wheatland, which is a couple blocks to the north of the subject property here. I've been there for just shy of three years. When I moved there, it was very obvious that further development would occur because of the vacant land basically surrounding us on all sides. That's well underway now. I had no idea of the Dobson Acres. I had no idea of the SC four zoning. If I had, I would have opposed it. That would probably predated when I lived there. But I, I am not anti-growth, but I do want to see it done responsibly and consistently in the surrounding neighborhoods. What I'd like to do tonight is illustrate a recent, you may call it a precedent, which occurred at the city council meeting, March nineteenth, and it involved this property right here, which is adjacent to, it is right here, this kind of trapezoid-shaped parcel right there. Just to the east of that is the Black Stallion Ranch, which is comprised of single-family homes of approximately point-four to point-five acres. The developer on that requested a, to change the densities of that, to put more houses on there. That was denied. That was, that met all the criteria from the city planning folks, all the staff, everything, and they recommended that, you know, it met the criteria, but the city council disagreed. And I'd like to read a couple of things from the, from the minutes from that meeting. Mayor Jacobson recalled that when that particular neighborhood was annexed, that there was a density agreement in there to retain the flavor of that general area. Councilman Malloy said, and I'm quoting from the minutes, which is probably not the quote that he actually gave, but you get the idea. He, Councilman Malloy is credited as saying, "I get concerned when a developer goes to an area, into an area, eyes wide open, then tries to change the density." Further on, he said, "The subject property in question shares one entire border with half-acre lots." That would be this border right here between the established part of that neighborhood and the new part that yet to be developed. So I want to make some comparisons to this, and if you could change this back to this, please.
Mr. Clemmison, just so you know, you do have one minute, so.
Okay. You, you notice right here, these are point-two-five acres. That's vacant, but it's to be, it's, they're, they're digging over in here now. So what you've got is, for each of these lots, you've got two of those. These are one-sixteenth of an acre. The surrounding area, the flavor of it, you've got the meadows to the north, which are right around an acre. Everything around here, point-four acres. Over to the east of Chase, about a quarter to, ah, point-four acres. And then down to the south, in the Montrose area, about a quarter acre or a little bigger. This does not fit. So this is, I would urge you to deny this proposal.
Thank you, sir. Also in opposition wishing to speak, Ann Aldrich.
Thank you very much, Ann Aldrich. And I live at eleven-thirty-nine West Wheatland Avenue of the Northern Plains First Edition and am on the homeowners association. The Coleman Acres project, as proposed, is a perfect illustration of poor urban planning. An illustration of how once prosperous, attractive community becomes becomes one the residents only want to leave rather than live long-term. We do understand the zoning of this area was put in place in 2017 or before, before the current subdivisions were built out. However, as the current homes have been built, Coleman Acres does not seem compatible with these subdivisions. Before Coleman Acres, there was a proposal, May 17th, which was the Dobson Acres. And incidentally, when we were sent, when the package was submitted, the, the plan that you saw for Coleman Acres wasn't there, only Dobson Acres. So, we had to find out about this after the fact. Coleman Acres is surrounded by, as you've been told, single-family homes consistent with an upscale neighborhood. Hopefully, you, our planners and zoning commissioners, are aware of the potential destructive force of density and will pull back from the current call to blanket every neighborhood with high-density multifamily homes. We, as homeowners, are not opposed to development or future building. However, hope you consider quality rather than quantity. The Coleman Acres development by its higher density will encourage absentee owners to replace homeowners, which in a very short period of time will destabilize our current neighborhoods. Neighborhoods are fragile and need to be nourished. Neighborhoods either get stronger or they get weaker and deteriorate. The goal in expanding neighborhoods should be to encourage developments with green acres and small neighborhood parks, adding to the quality of life for the residents. There is none in this proposal. In Coleman Acres, they only want 43 homes of one sort or another crammed on slightly over 3.5 acres. This would definitely disrupt and negatively affect the appeal of Monarch Homes, Black Stallion, and Northern Plains, along with the other adjacent neighborhoods. Coleman Acres, as presented, would not only be adding density, but with this many small residences in such a small area, in all probability, clog the streets with parked cars, which has been addressed. And just contribute to general overcrowding. Looking at the size of the lots and considering normal property setbacks in order to push this through, we'd probably be looking at zero setbacks and special firewalls. With this, you better be liking your neighbor because you're going to be able to reach out and touch them. We all understand builders naturally want to make the most profit out of each development. But at what cost to existing communities? Would you, as planners, want this on the other side of the fence for your homes? As our zoning and planning commission, don't you owe it to the community and people you serve to only recommend the most reasonable and best use of open lands under consideration? Adding this type of density to these neighborhoods may make planners feel good. However, we, the homeowners, strongly object. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, lastly, in opposition wishing to speak, Brian File. Thanks for the note, Brian.
Good evening. My name is Brian File. I live at 1047 West Pole Line Avenue, which is the six-acre county property adjacent to and directly west of the proposed Coleman Acres subdivision. My wife and I purchased this property in January of 2018. And before purchasing it, we did our due diligence and we were aware of the city of Post Falls zoning that surrounded our property. We also understood that much of it was going to be developed. We are not anti-growth and understand that Post Falls is a growing community and we are happy to be part of it. We have since met most of our neighbors and are pleased to be able to call them friends. This subdivision will have significant impact to us. We do have horses and other animals and plan to continue to maintain a country lifestyle on our property, even though we are surrounded by a growing city. We would also hope that our property would never be forced to annex into the city of Post Falls until we chose to do so. I am opposed to these 43 dwelling units on this 3.54 acres. It is my opinion that this amount of density doesn't complement the surrounding neighborhood. Unfortunately, for those of us already living in the area, the smart code SC4 zoning for this proposed subdivision has already been approved. And I also understand that the zoning for this property is like, is unlikely to be changed at this point. With that understanding, I would respectfully ask the commission and/or developer to consider the following. Number one, require that an HOA with CCRs be established to maintain the quality of this subdivision. It is anticipated that many of these units will end up as rentals. If an HOA is not established, this subdivision could quickly negatively affect property values in the area. Also, vehicle parking within the subdivision could also create safety hazard if too many vehicles are parked on the street. That side of the road, I know there's quite a few homes that are going to be put down there. Can a fire truck get down there safely? I don't know. I posed that question. But I do know that CCRs could help mitigate, mitigate these concerns. Number two was already brought up and I would ask that a six-foot tall vinyl solid fence, preferably surrounding the subdivision or at least on the east and west side of the subdivision before construction begins. This would definitely lessen the impact to the neighborhood and directly affected properties, mine and the gentleman that lives in the northwest corner. I, I do know across the street from Pole Line, not Pole, yeah, Pole Line, Columbia Estates, that was, that was done. And that definitely helped mitigate the noise and, and some of the, especially having horses ride across the property would help, be very helpful. Number three, consider the long-term impact of this proposed subdivision on this neighborhood as future land is annexed into this area. How much high-density is needed? And having the six acres directly west of this, of this subdivision, question how that would, how that would go moving forward. I know that the city would love to annex in the rest of the county pockets in the area. My last point to consider is this. Twenty-nine units instead of 43 dwelling units on the same 3.54 acres would also achieve the eight dwelling units necessary to reach the requirements for this zoning. Perhaps the nine lots on the south side of the road could also be townhomes or single-family homes instead of fourplexes or duplexes. This entire area could be worked to put 29 family, or dwelling units instead of 43. Would make a lot of sense to me. This would lessen the density in the subdivision and spread out the dwelling units. I do also understand that this would mean potentially less revenue for the developer and less short-term tax revenue for the city. However, would it also mean a better neighborhood and higher property values long-term in the area? I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. File, appreciate it. Ever anything else? Okay. Rebuttal.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your comments. And I'm here to address a few of the concerns. You know, not that I need to explain what we're going to build there, but let's talk a little bit about what we are going to build here. First of all, to the north, we had planned on single level, 1,000 to 1,200 square foot, two-bedroom, two-bath, real similar to the products that Cunningham, or Active West put in. These are nice products. With rising housing costs, not everybody can afford a half-acre lot. Sometimes, you know, this, this, the inspiration behind this development was about the products that we were going to put in, unique products that I feel that we need in Post Falls. I live in the condos and my mom does too, right down on 848 North Chase, Chase Mall, okay? I'm, I own a development company. And I'll tell you what, living in that condo, me and my wife and my son, we have an unbelievable quality of life. Low maintenance, I mean fairly crime-free. You can't pick your neighbors, you're right. But I'll tell you what, I've enjoyed living there for seven years. This is my community as well. And, you know, our company is committed to bring special products to this, that we feel that we have a need in this community. You know, not everybody can afford three, four, $500 million house. And this town, they're rising. I mean, we're building up in Meadow Grove right now, you know, development we did. And I'll tell you, the least expensive house in there is $360,000. That's, you know, there's a lot of people, they don't need four bedrooms. Two bedrooms is more than enough. There's a lot of professionals in this town that enjoy living here, that want to live a low-maintenance life. And these are the kind of products that we're talking about. I mean, this is all timber and hardy plank siding. This isn't garbage product we're putting in here. What's been approved already at 35 units, you know, yeah, I could just say, forget it. We can just build apartment complex here. We can right now, but that's not what we do. And we have seven developments in Post Falls that we've done, we're building in. And, you know, at first, we, we met a lot of opposition, Meadow Grove. You know, we told them we're going to build single-family homes. They said, oh, you could put two-story houses, this and that. I said, no, we're going to do single-level homes. Because they, so that they are more ADA, 55 and older. And we fulfilled our promise at North Chase Place with all 20 of those houses, single-level houses, okay? So, when everybody's talking about home values, you know, and concerned about riffraff coming into their neighborhood, that's not always the case. You know, and not every developer is trying to line their pockets with money. Our inspiration is trying to bring, bring quality products to Post Falls for people that, you know, don't want a huge house with a huge lawn and that's it. And that's okay. Nobody asked, you know, anybody that doesn't want a small yard, nobody asks you to buy it, live there. You know, or your neighbor's right next door. So, I'd appreciate approving this at the 43. We're trying to increase it by eight because the lots to the south, we're not building fourplexes. The lots to the south are going to be duplexes in single units. And, you know, we're trying to, to make something here that would be conducive to this surrounding neighborhood. And I think that our company, if you do a little research, has proven in Post Falls that, you know, we keep our promises and we build what we say we're going to build. And a couple of concerns about the fence and to the neighbor, to the, to the west. Yeah, we're building a nice, in fact, not just any fence. We're building like timber-style fence, fences. It's going to be a little more upscale. And, you know, around the neighbor on the corner, yes, we're putting a six-foot fence in. So, I think Chris mentioned it earlier. Yes, we are, you know. So, these are all things that we're not required to do, but we are and we do. Because again, myself, a lot of people that work in our company live in these surrounding neighborhoods, Pioneer, up in Meadow Grove, you know, over in Whiskey Flats. We live in this neighborhood as well and we drive Chase Road every day. So, anyway, I appreciate your comments and your constructive criticism. And I'd appreciate it if this gets approved so that we can move forward and build some nice, quality homes that I feel that this town needs that aren't half-million dollars, 300,000, you know, so other people can come and enjoy the quality of life that we have enjoyed for these years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Will there, all the units have garages?
Yes, yes.
So, there will be off-street parking?
Yes. And I've worked it out with, you know, I've worked closely with the planning department over the last year on this project. In fact, we were already starting to build it and we stopped for a moment because this isn't what this neighborhood needs. It's approved. We can go ahead, 35 units, go ahead and build this, fourplexes. But, but this isn't conducive to future connectivity. And honestly, fourplex, this isn't, and these row houses, lot one through seven, I mean, you want to talk about small, I mean, these things are like 1,900 square foot. I don't know what kind of home you can put on that, but not any home that we built. So, you know, we scrapped all this. We bought this property, already zoned. And, and we took this and we literally threw it up in the garbage can, threw it away and tried to come up with a new design that, again, was going to be conducive to the neighbors to the north and the south. So, we built the Columbia State subdivision just to the south. That turned out to be a beautiful subdivision. And those homes in there are not, I mean, they're beautiful homes. So, again, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Another question on the concern with the service trucks, fire, fire engines. Do you believe that they can service and get in there?
Yeah, the fire department's already looked at this and approved it. So, yes. Any other questions?
Any other questions for applicant?
I, I just have one about, so there's, there is your on-street parking, right? I mean, there's, so I'm having a hard time seeing it. Is the road wider for the on-street parking or what's, how does it accommodate?
I'm not an engineer. I mean, if.
Okay, that's probably a question I should have asked staff.
Right, no, no problem.
That's all right. I just was, I was just trying to get a better vision of that and how that would work, so.
Yeah, no problem.
But each unit has its own driveway and has its own garage.
Yes, their own garage, own driveway. And, you know, it meets the setbacks, the minimum and maximum setbacks that the, for the SC4. There's a lot of things we had to work around with the SC4 zoning to get, put the product that we want to on here.
So, so even on the multifamilies, those will have a garage for each unit or?
Yes. So, and multifamily, it's hard for me to consider duplexes. I mean, I guess they are, but that's, we're not building fourplexes. This, these are, there's going to be duplexes to the south. And, you know, and it's also going to be fenced to the south as well. And, and so we're still working out the details on the lots to the south as far as how we would set that up and this and that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anything else for applicant? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Questions for staff?
Oh, on-street parking then. So, is that, are the roads a little wider or how, how are you accommodating for just all this on-street parking?
Well, it's part of one of the conditions, you can see, that we placed or worked with the applicant because we recognized the lots were narrow and that we didn't want to have on-street parking concerns that we've seen other areas that have developed, even on wider lots. And so, they have a restriction of a 16-foot wide driveway within the right-of-way. That way, they can actually get cars parked on the street.
I get what you're saying now. I was, that's where I was confused, is understanding what the.
Now, Rob, he can actually address the width besides just the driveway.
Commissioner Hamp, members of the commission, the road width for the east-west roadway in the subdivision, this one here, is being proposed in the plan at 32 feet of width. That's the same width as you would find in any typical, single-family residential neighborhood in the city of Post Falls. Foxtail, Fieldstone, the subdivision immediately to the north of this one, they all have 32-foot wide roadways. The short north-south roadway here, that is being proposed, it's at 28 feet of width. That would mean that it would only be allowed to have parking on one side only.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Go ahead and close the hearing out, open it up for comment. Mr. Latham.
I was last. I get to be first?
Yeah.
Well, I, a couple of things. The Dobson layout, well, I sure like that better as far as a layout, not, not talking about density or anything like that. I do like that. I'm not big on the eight-unit dwelling unit increase. But I sure like that connectivity and the other layout is, was, you know, we can't, we can't comment on that the last time around. It's, it didn't make a lot of sense to me back then either. It is SC4 in that area and there's nothing that we can do about it. And I don't think there's anything that any adjacent homeowners can do about it that I know of or anything like that. And I guess it's, it's a shame or it's too bad if the realtors didn't, were misleading or didn't divulge that or it didn't find out. or didn't divulge that, or it, it didn't find out about that, but the SC four is pretty dense. Um, and so that's, those could be apartments, and that's what I look at this as a balance. Um, it's, and then the other thing is, I, I don't, I don't like small lots personally, but it's, it's an issue where land prices are going up, materials are going up, labor is going up. How do millennials, how do people that make X amount of dollars a year afford a home? And you have to squeeze the house size down, or you have to squeeze the lot size down, or both. And that's what we're seeing, and that's why that's happening around this town. If you, you know, you can buy five acres in the Midwest maybe, or something, for the same price, I don't know, but the lots here have to get smaller to be affordable, otherwise people can't live or buy homes in Post Falls. And that's the nature of it, and that's, for better or worse, that's what's happening right now. Um, so I don't care for the small lots myself, and I don't like the extra eight-unit increase, but everything else on it makes good sense, it, it does make a lot of sense to me.
Mr. Bishop?
Uh, I did, I mean, everything Mark said was, was, uh, I agree with, and, um, that's it.
Sounds like maybe houseboats would be the way to go? Anybody else is hearing that? Nancy?
I, I, I agree as far as the, I like the layout better, absolutely, but I, I, I don't like the increase of, of the, um, eight units. I mean, that's putting a, that's putting a couple extra units on every acre, um, a couple extra houses on every acre, and that, that, that is, that is tight. My, um, I, I agree that it's, it, it is zoned, that, that it can have that density, but I would still like to see it stay at a, at the lower density, personally.
James?
Yep, kind of with everybody else, I don't really like the increase, but I do like the fact that it's a good variety of, of homes, you know? Everybody's houses are getting much more expensive, and you gotta have that good variety that people can't afford those, you know, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar houses. Um, you know, I think if they're gonna have garages and parking, I have, I think that keeps a lot of the cars off the street, even in, in my neighborhood, everybody has a two-car garage, and there's still cars everywhere. So, I don't know if there's any good way around that. You know, if there's some way we can, you know, get a fence up around it to protect, or maybe some sort of divide from the other neighborhoods, that address some of their concerns, or, you know, there's really, other than trees, I see there's really no green space, but of course, you're not really talking about a lot of land either here, there's probably parks, two or three parks within a couple, a mile. Um, but I do, I like this plan much better than the other one.
Ray?
So I don't like SC four zone. Uh, that said, the applicant has got a challenge in front of them in actually making this work and doing all the engineering, and I don't envy, as an engineer, I don't envy their engineer in trying to make this thing work, and it's gonna be a, a challenge, and if you can make it happen, good for him. But it meets all our criteria in subdivision ordinance. And we haven't heard any evidence tonight that says otherwise, that it hasn't met requirements of subdivision ordinance. And unlike all the other zones, all the traditional zones in Post Falls, it's a minimum density. And even if those were all single-family lots, he'd barely make the minimum density. So that's what he, we're kinda stuck with, is that kind of product, or if we're gonna go see, that, single-family, uh, or it lends itself to apartments, which is really just the other thing. And I don't know how much, how palatable that would be, uh, to the community, uh, and the neighborhood as well. So, it, the fact is, it meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, and based on that, we should be approving it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the connectivity is tremendously better, um, I like that way, way better, but again, um, I have issue with the density, um, but it does meet the criteria. So, unless there's any other comment, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Chairman Davis?
Yes.
If I might, for just a second, um, there's a lot of folks here tonight that we typically don't have with us, and there's been a lot of comments about, we don't like the density. I'd like to, for their fo- sake, um, essentially make a comment explaining our process, how we, how we do what we do, so people understand kind of what we're up to here tonight. At the time the application comes in, at that point in time, the applicant has a right to have their application judged against the rules in effect at the date the application comes in. So while, I don't know that anyone is particularly crazy about the smart code zoning, that's the zoning in effect, and we can't essentially deny the application pending, you know, doing something different, creating a different zoning district. So that, that's kind of off the table, the law wouldn't allow us to do that. So, as we go through our subdivision code, then we look at what, under Idaho code, we can only judge the application against our adopted criteria. And under our code, uh, those criteria are, is there adequate water, is there adequate sewer, are the roads designed to meet our standards, do the lots conform with the, the zoning or code, is there hazards, you know, topography, soils, those types of things, and is there any extraordinary fiscal impact created by the development that isn't otherwise offset by impact fees? Those are the only things that we get to consider under the law. So, I hope folks understand that when you, these items come before you, that you're playing a role, you're essentially acting as a judge at this point, and so you're, those are the only things that you can consider. It's unlike wearing the other hat that planning commissioners wear, which is when you're looking proactively down the road and trying to decide, what should we do? And some of those projects are ongoing that will ultimately lead to some changes in our zoning code.
Okay. Excellent. Any other comment? Then entertain a motion at this time.
I've moved to approve subdivision S U B D zero-zero-zero-one-dash-two-zero-one-nineteen, Coleman Acres, finding that it meets the criteria of the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance, adopting conditions one through ten found in the staff report.
Been a motion, looking for a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and second, roll call.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us into Gabriel Estate subdivision. Go ahead and open that public hearing. Ethan, to present.
Post Falls. I'm here to present case file S U B D dash three dash two thousand and nineteen. Um, this is the Gabriel State subdivision. The owner of the subdivision is American Crew Builders LLC, and the applicant applying is Ace Solutions. Their requested action is for approval to subdivide approximately four point six-seven acres into nineteen single-family residential lots, and they range from sixty-five hundred to just over eleven thousand square feet in size. And so, here you can see the project location is the Red Hatch, um, it's, right down here is Seltice Way, and then you have Maguire Road, and then Okanagan Avenue right here. So it's basically at the intersection of Okanagan Avenue and North Maguire Road. Surrounding it to the west is, uh, basically ag county lands. The current land use is large lot residential, um, for single-family. Uh, the water provider for this subdivision is gonna be East Green Acres Irrigation District, and the sewer is gonna be provided by the City of Post Falls. This will be a one-phase subdivision, uh, development, and the density is proposed at four point zero-six units per acre. And the private road that is, um, gonna be proposed is Gabriel Court along with, uh, Okanagan Avenue extending through to the west. So the six subdivision review criteria, number one is the definite provision has been made for a water supply system that is adequate in terms of quantity and quality for the type of subdivision proposed, and that is true, I believe, Exhibit A eight in your staff report, has the will serve letter for East Green Acres Irrigation District, so you can refer to that. Uh, number two is adequate provisions have been made for a public sewage system, and since City of Post Falls sewer is gonna be provided to this, they do have the capacity for the subdivision. Number three is proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. And so this shows you the subdivision along, um, uh, North Maguire Road, it's showing the frontage improvements being done, as far as the multi-use path and the swale and curb and curb inside, or curb as well. And so, you can see the layout of Okanagan Avenue extending west right here, and then Gabriel Court, the private road is proposed here. Uh, number four for the criteria was all areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards. Uh, city staff has reviewed, uh, this subdivision and existing conditions at site and determined that there are no hazards, uh, regarding topographical soils or conditions. Uh, number five, the area proposed subdivision is zoned for the proposed use and the use conforms to the requirements found in this code. Uh, here you can see the surrounding zoning currently, um, it was annexed in as R one. Uh, the, the subject site is the black hatched area, and so it was annexed in as R one and remains R one. And to the south, you can see Seltice Way has commercial along, along it, uh, and then to the east, you have industrial with a mix since the PUD overlay of residential, and then there's apartments here as well. The future land use shows that it's gonna be designated as R one, or residential, excuse me, and the surrounding land is also gonna be designated as residential, except with, obviously, the purple being industrial, and then Seltice Way maintaining that commercial. Before I move on, also meeting their lot width requirements and their, um, lot sizes, you can see that we have sixty-foot lot widths along here as well, and then, like I said, they're sixty-five, uh, hundred square foot lots, and then up to just over eleven hundred, meeting that requirement for zoning for residential. And then the subdivision, uh, review criteria continued as far as number six, the last one, the developer has made adequate plans to ensure that the community will bear no more than its fair share of cost to provide services by paying fees for niche lands and providing other mitigation measures for off-site impacts to streets, parks, and other public facilities, um, within the community. This is, uh, basically being accomplished through the building permit application and the accompanied, uh, impact fees associated with that. And so for the agencies routed, um, there they are. And then comments received is the Post Falls Police Department basically staying neutral on the project, and then the Post Falls Highway District, um, commenting on annexing the North Maguire Road from Seltice Way to Echo Drive, which would've been done, and was done in the annexation process. So this is a subdivision now, so it's already been taken care of. Do you have any comments or questions?
Questions for staff?
Just one quick one, it looks like lot nine, kind of up there at the end of that little Gabriel Court. Um, it looks like it doesn't quite meet the sixty feet on a street, thirty-seven. I think we could...
So the Title seventeen requires that all residential lots front a private street. Setbacks measured at the front setback line, so, um, it'll be, it is plausible that once you hit that front setback line, you might, you could attain that sixty-foot lot width and still front a, uh, private street. It's no different than like on a cul-de-sac where you wrap around.
Okay.
You know, you get some lots that are twenty-four feet wide, or twenty-five feet wide around that.
But it meets the sixty feet at the setback. So that, so the front setback would be kind of that angled line between nine and eight right there, and that's, okay, that's like about sixty. Okay.
I'm envisioning probably will end up being like a side-loaded project, of sort, it'll be some awkward lot, but, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? Thank you. Bring up the applicant.
My name is Roger Glessner, I'm with Ace Solutions, six oh nine North Calgary Court, Post Falls, Idaho, and we, we represent the owner on this subdivision. Thank you, staff, for working with us. This, uh, this seemingly simple subdivision had a few challenges. One of them being the offset, um, city street that we're planning to put through there, we had to swing it over so that it would line up with the intersection across the road, um, hence it, creating the awkward corner in there for those lots. And rather than going with, um, a long, narrow lot to access a lot wide enough to build on in the back, we chose to go with a private road to give a little bit more openness, a little bit easier, uh, ability to maintain. On that road, that is a private road, and it will be on an easement, and it will be signed for no parking on both sides. Another criteria that we're going to meet is the S curve on, uh, Okanagan Avenue, um, we, we have been requested to reduce that down to fifteen mile an hour speed limit through there because of the curves. And so, um, with those two things, we're able to make this, uh, subdivision work for the, the owner, and, um, we hope that this is a, this is a good product. This is your standard, in my view, your standard Post Falls R one residential subdivision. And, uh, we believe that we meet all those, uh, requirements. Another thing that we did do, or we are proposing, is a temporary turnaround on the west end of Okanagan, um, until that further development comes, that street could get, uh, extended at that time, and for now, we would, uh, propose a temporary turnaround for emergency vehicles. Along with this subdivision, uh, we are also doing some street front widening and improvements along Maguire Road, which includes some widening of the asphalt, uh, stormwater treatment areas, uh, landscaping, and a multi-use ten-foot path through there, so.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
So the little private road, Ben, how will that be maintained?
That'll be maintained through a homeowners' association.
A homeowners' association for just those, those three lots there, is that...
And I, I believe that we have to have a homeowners' association to take care of the, uh, some of the improvements along Maguire also, irrigating the, the landscape, mowing the grass, too. So it could feasibly, it could be the same homeowners' association.
Okay.
Okay. Excellent. Any other questions? None? Okay. Thank you, sir. Public comment? In favor?
They didn't mark it, so...
We'll ask them. Planty? Plant, Wayne Plant wishing to speak.
Again. My name's Wayne Plant, I live at, uh, twenty-four forty-seven West Echo Drive, the property just due south of his proposed project. And looking at that, they've done a pretty well, uh, idea on design, although I don't know what they're gonna do with snow in the wintertime, where they're gonna put it. And, uh, I was talking to him about my concern with, uh, the property just west of me, he has cattle and horses, and there's barbed wire fence on both perimeters, my property and his. It needs to be addressed, some sort of maybe vinyl fence put around... It needs to be addressed, some sort of maybe vinyl fence put around it, you know, like most of these estate projects do, not only for privacy for everybody, but safety concerns. You know, kids getting in the barbed wire fence and, you know, horses and cows, knowing kids and everything. My other concern is the intersection. Now, where I'm at, at Echo, these people come around the corner there in the wintertime and there's just enough pitch there, they end up going through my fence and in my yard. So I'm concerned when I, years ago when I talked to Gary Cook about the widening of Maguire, he said, "Well, originally they had figured out that they were going to have one lane south, one lane north, and a center lane for a turn lane." Now, unless you address that, there's going to be a lot of ass ends smashed with people coming down the road, because I mean, they really move. And I very seldom see a Post Falls cop out there, you know, addressing the traffic. Traffic is a concern all the way around, you know. I mean, I, today, just for the heck of it, I took a ride up Midway, you know, and the houses are almost all the way up to Ridgeview. And then I took a ride out Spokane Street and just where it rises right there at the golf course, I looked out there and I said, "Holy Jesus. I have never seen so many houses go up in such a short time out there on Prairie and Chase." And I took a ride out there and I don't know how the city's keeping track of it. They got two building inspectors. And I don't know how they can keep track of all of that, you know. I mean, it's a concern and I found out why the traffic is getting so bad on Maguire, because everybody out from 53 comes down that way and across 53, you know, I mean, there's only two areas you can take for main roads going through there. Anyways, that's all I wanted to address and I hope they can take care of those concerns for the safety of everybody, you know.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Davis, we have another person that signed up. It looks like they signed up for both of the next hearings on one form.
Okay.
So it's not clear if they want to speak to this one or not.
Patrick Gresham, did you want to speak to this one or the next one?
I'd speak of both. My concerns are for both of them.
Okay. So if you want, I was going to say you can absolutely, you have the opportunity to speak at both of them if you want to come up now. State your name and...
I'm Patrick Graham. Sorry.
Nope, Graham, nope, you're good. It's been a, it's been a long evening, a lot of reading, so I apologize.
You started out so well.
So, yeah, if you state your name and address and you've got four minutes.
My name is Patrick Graham. I live at 2996 West Yukon Avenue, Post Falls. It's just to the north of where the next two, the next one development as well, subdivision that's annexed in or getting annexed in. I believe you already did that, annex that chunk of property and, anyway, so the concern is which, like everybody, is traffic on Maguire. You keep building north. It's, we were in the county and you annexed that piece of property in already. So you had a comment earlier about the dream millennials buying acreage. There's a property that's right next door to the next, to the proposed subdivision. Couple of mid-20-year-olds bought that piece of property and now subdivision's going in next door. It can happen, but, anyway. I guess I'm looking for green space. I mean, I live on acreage, that's why I bought there. I get the benefit of living close to the city, but not actually in the city, not having to deal with all the traffic and the noise. I mean, if these subdivisions go through, I hope the train never stops running, to be honest with you. That'll keep everybody having to go on southeast instead of going north. So, I wrote some notes, just wasn't really prepared for it, so, yeah. That's basically it. I mean, I would like to see something that as you're annexing properties into the city, how about leaving green space, going one house per acre? But that's me, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you, appreciate it. Any rebuttal from the applicant?
Well, I think the last comments were probably more global to the city, maybe future planning questions, stuff like that. I've lived here all but a couple of years of my life and I grew up in this area and I remember when Maguire was a gravel road and people would dust up it at 50, 60 miles an hour. Now it's paved, now it's more properly controlled and I believe it's 35 mile an hour now. And maybe as growth takes place, the speed limit maybe will even get reduced. I don't know. But we do feel that we are meeting the requirements of the city with this subdivision.
Okay. Any questions?
Do you have any plan for fencing then, since you, it is, there is, you know, animals and barbed wire on the other side of it?
We do not.
You don't?
Yeah. As the fence to the south of us actually is off of the property right now, that whoever had built it at one time thought that that was part of the property line. It's off of the property a little bit and it'll probably stay there, I would imagine.
So it's just back a little bit, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you. Questions for staff? None? Okay. Go ahead and close the hearing. Rather than picking on anyone, I will open it up if there's any comment.
Seems like it meets the requirements, the subdivision ordinance, as well as zoning code, chicane, that little bowie in the road, although some people don't like those, I think they're fantastic. I think they keep people driving slow and they're great for residential neighborhoods. It makes people require, makes them drive slow and that's what we should have in residential neighborhoods. So I think it's a benefit and 15 miles an hour is fine.
Any other comment?
Just coming in, it's 40 miles an hour on Maguire. Yeah.
Okay.
Guessing, guessing you drive that a lot, huh?
Do you drive 40 miles an hour? Always.
If there's no other comment, then I'll go ahead and entertain a motion at this From anyone on the commission?
I move to approve the subdivision Gabriel Estates, finding that meets the appropriate criteria in Post Falls, you know, imminiscible code.
Conditions 1 through 9.
Conditions 1 through 9.
Okay. Okay. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? Go ahead and take roll.
Happy?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Timble?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Okay, so moved. All right. Bring us to our next public hearing, Wildflower Meadows Subdivision.
Hello again, commissioners. This is case file SUBD-4-2019 called Wildflower Meadows Subdivision. The subdivision is two parcels with two separate owners and so the owners are Dina Hubert and Steve Cassell and the applicant, again, is Ace Solutions. The requested action for Ace Solutions is the request approval to subdivide approximately 9.32 acres into 34 single-family residential lots. These range from just over 6,500 to just under 14,000 square feet in size. Here you can see the project location. Currently, it's not saying that it's in city boundaries, but it is, it was, the annexation went through previously and has been approved and recorded. And so it's in the similar area as Gabriel Estates, just north of it, and so it's the two parcels above. The currently in use is large lot residential with single family. The water provider is East Green Acres Irrigation District and the sewer is provided by the City of Post Falls. This subdivision may potentially be constructed in two phases due to the separate owners having two owners and two parcels, so. They have a density that's proposed at 3.6 units per acre and the proposed streets are going to be Cody Lane and Wilhelm Way. And so for the subdivision review criteria, we have the provision that's been made for the water supply system and I believe Exhibit A9 shows the will serve letter from East Green Acres Irrigation District, allowing them to have capacity and serve them. And then adequate provisions for number two for sewer, the City of Post Falls does have capacity to serve this subdivision. And so for review criteria three, the proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. Here you can see the subdivision layout and I'm actually going to switch. So here you see Wilhelm Way and then Cody Lane is here. And so Steve Cassell's parcel is the west half and then Dina Hubert is the east half. And they are proposing to maintain their homes, existing homes on the parcels here and here. That's why you see the larger lot size, that's why it goes so high. And so number four, all areas of the proposed subdivision which may involve soil and topographical conditions presenting hazards have been identified. City staff has reviewed the existing conditions and the area and determined that there are no hazards with the topographic layout of the land. So review criteria five, the area proposed for subdivision is zoned for the proposed use and the use conforms to the requirements found in this code. Here you can see the surrounding zoning. Again, currently, when this map was drawn up, it was prior to what are reflected over in our JS system, so it doesn't show that it's residential, but it is as of last week. And so it is zoned R1 as it came annexed in. And again, it's right above Gabriel Estates subdivision. And so, once again, you do have Seltice with the commercial and then industrial with a PUD overlay from Montrose that has multi, or multifamily apartments here and then single family here and then your R1 in the northeast. Future land use shows that this area is designated once again as residential and they do meet all the requirements for lot width and lot sizes as seen in their subdivision layout. Number six, for the review criteria, the developer has made adequate plans to ensure that the community will bear no more than its fair share of costs to provide services by paying fees, furnishing land, and providing other mitigation measures for offsite impacts to streets, parks, and other public facilities within the community. Once again, this is done through building permit application and the associated impact fees with that. And the agencies routed, and the comments, again, are the police sta, or the Post Falls Police Department, we're neutral on this project, and the Post Falls Highway District, once again, required then an annexation for North Maguire Road from Seltice to Echo Drive, which had been done in the annexation process prior. Do you have any questions or comments?
Comments for staff?
Just discrepancy, if you can clear it up on the document we're reading, it's stating 38 single-family units. And you're...
Oh, yeah, and this is the 34.
And you're said 34.
That's my mistake, then would I...
It's 34.
Well, it's...
38.
30.
30. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Applicant?
For the record, Roger Glessner, 609 North Calgary Court, Post Falls, Idaho. I'm with Ace Solutions and we represent this project. Just to point out that clarification, once again, it is 38 residential lots.
Okay.
We're doing street-side improvements on Maguire Road, same as we are with the subdivision, Gabriel subdivision, by doing some street widening, sidewalks, stormwater treatment areas, and a multi-use path with landscape trees. Also on Midway, we're doing half-street improvements. We are going to be extending a sewer main from across Maguire going west on Midway that will service the project as, as well as, well, the water's already there, so we'll be just tapping into the water that's currently there. And so we'll be doing the improvements on Midway as well, the half-street improvements, which includes the widening of the road, curb treatment areas, and a multi-use 10-foot wide path. We're also stubbing, there's two sewer manholes right here that will connect in through the subdivision and we are going to stub to the north there as requested by the city for future extension or development. The Cody Lane comes down, Wilhelm comes across the south here, we will run it out to the west property line for future extension, for future development. Wilhelm Lane, because of the right-of-way that we gave to the city for the improvements on Maguire, we, we were narrowed down here, so we went with a narrower right-of-way section through this portion of the project. We have six-foot wide landscape strips rather than roadside swells, treatment swells. So the treatment will be, we'll have several areas of stormwater treatment in between the lots. It'll be designed, once we get into the design phase, and once we get back here onto the Castle property, we go back to a standard street section with a 10-foot roadside swell. All of the lots are minimum 60-foot width and minimum 6,500 square feet. A number, I forget what the average lot size is, I think it's around 8,000, 9,000 square foot is the average lot size.
Mr. Glessner, really quick, just to clarify, so the paved width is going to be the same on all the streets?
Yes.
It's just what the sidewalk treatment looks like, whether it's six feet from the curb or 10 feet?
Correct. The only thing that changes is instead of a 10-foot roadside swell area, there's six-foot roadside swell areas. The streets are still 32 feet, face to curb, face to curb, all the way through.
Okay. Anything else for applicant? No? Again, thank you, sir. Any individuals?
Just one.
Got this one. Okay. Mr. Graham, do you wish to, again, for the, for the record, name and address? You have four minutes.
Patrick Graham, 2996 West Yukon Avenue, Post Falls. Yeah, so I guess the, I remember when everything was gravel, prairie, hayden, so, yeah, not just Maguire. So I've been around here a long time as well. Basically, what the other thing that I forgot to bring up is that you're going to end up forcing the other people to annex into the city as well and get on board and develop their property, because you're, you're going to diminish property value right next door. The young couple I was talking about, that's, their property is next door to this one and, you know. He's got a dead-end street that is going to go right into a fence, so, but, that's, I guess, nothing was addressed either on that as far as fencing on that backside of the property or, or is it just the back of the house is there and it's up to the young couple to come up with fencing the property to make sure to keep everyone out. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any rebuttal on that? Okay.
I believe, and maybe Steve could clarify this, the owner. I believe there is a boubouar fence on the west side of the property right now that would join the neighboring property that already exists.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Any questions for staff? None? Go ahead and close the hearing. Open it up for comment.
I guess I can't say the same as last one, but it does meet all the requirements of the zoning code, the subdivision ordinance. It's all those criteria. And I haven't heard anything tonight that says otherwise. So we should probably, or we should approve it as presented with the conditions.
Okay. I hear some yeps, so I would entertain a motion at this time.
Would move to approve subdivision file, looking for it here, SUBD-0004-2019, Wildflower Meadows, finding that it meets the requirements, subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance and the criteria stated in the staff report, adopting conditions of approval 1 through 8.
Got a motion, looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Go ahead and call for vote.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Okay, so moved. Brings us to the last public hearing of the evening. Ethan, if you could share with Jamie, I think she left, but nice job tonight. We'll see if Mr. Manley can do as well. But we'll go ahead and open up the Title 18A text amendment.
Yeah, I don't know if I really remember much by now, but...
It's like riding a bike, John.
There we go. So, yes, John Manley, planning manager here with the city Post Falls Planning Division, introducing the proposed Title 18A text amendment, case number TA-2019. So the planning division is requesting to hopefully assure some commercial development along Spokane Street and to modify how the lot coverage is calculated for Title 18 within SMART code. So what we'd be doing tonight is reviewing this and making a recommendation to city council that will make the ultimate decision. So the first change is an 18A 2070 building configuration specifically for the SC5/SC6 product. And it's targeting the Spokane Street corridor. And I have a map just in a minute that'll kind of detail this a little bit better. But it's to have ground floor of any structure constructed on a lot with frontage on Spokane Street must be used for non-residential uses. The important part here is a lot with frontage. So even if you're on a corner lot, you've still got frontage. So you're not, you know, there's no argument that you don't front Spokane or not. What's being stricken our proposers, a strike through, has actually been on the itinerary to remove for a while because it proves problematic. A first-level residential or lodging function shall be raised a minimum of two feet from the average sidewalk grade. Well, if you're dealing with ADA, it's, it proves complicated right away, specifically for what's being targeted residential and lodging. So it was kind of convenient to just remove, replace something to address on Spokane Street. So the darker, not the darkest, the SD1, but the most dark on this map is the SMART code 5 zone. So Spokane Street running from about the exit off-ramps of I-90 to First Street would be the areas in the SC5 that would be, would receive this code amendment. The red is CCS, which is commercial anyways, and it's already some doctor's offices there. So before I go into lot coverages, and it kind of dovetails a little bit with Spokane Street and on why we're asking this, but how did we get where we're at? Well, in 2005, we had a Post Falls City Center Plan. And it looked at creating some sort of downtown, some destination area recognized for identity for Post Falls. And here's where you have a list of projects that they identified for this, for hopefully encouraging. Some of that we've seen, we've seen Fourth Street with some enhancements a while back. You have the north-south streets that go along with it. Most recently, we got Spokane Street upgraded. Also, within the city center plan, it also entertained that we may have to look at the form or disposition. This kind of was the precursor to SMART code and kind of led probably to the rationale why SMART code came to be. And it is, when you're looking at the street, that your typical auto-centric type development, you'd have your parking lot in front, building in the back. And it kind of alludes to here, you get maybe by putting the buildings in front and rethinking things, you get additional square footage and maybe a reduced parking area. And of which you can, SMART could kind of manifest it and kind of entertain that with its SC4 and SC5 zoning. So you look at here, specific to the SC4, SC5, SC6 zoning, this is currently what the code states, is that building density on a lot shall be determined by the sum of the actual parking calculated and that provided by what's within the lot, along the parking lane corresponding to lot frontage, or by purchase or lease from a civic parking reserve with a pedestrian shed, if available. Currently, the C part, we don't have that in our code to entertain that or the mechanisms. It's been discussed, but we do have the mechanism to maybe do some accreditation for the parking or provided along the frontage. So that's saying, okay, we're thinking about things differently, having some parking on the street. We want to encourage more of that built environment, built form. And to reinforce that a little bit further, we got pictures that also show what was the goal to attain with the city center plan and I believe that SMART code was believing to mirror. So then that leads to the landscape, making some modifications for potentially the lot coverage. And I'll go into why that's important here in just a bit. So you have here, strike, this part, which is impermeable surface shall be counted within the ratio of lot coverage, specific to table 14F attached to the ordinance. So table, that is a table that talks about parking ratios and whatnot. So Title 18, which is our typical, most of the cities in Title 18, we don't deal with impervious surfaces part of lot coverage. And so it's a little bit counterintuitive, and one code speaks one language, the other speaks another. In addition, when you're trying to attain more built environment and you see the code clearly saying that you want to have on-street parking to provide some of the parking demands of the structure, there's some corollary-type events occurring. Also, you look at when the, you're saying we'd like to have a three-story max in the SC4, but two minimum. By having the two minimum, you're saying we'd rather not have a one-story. That's why you have the minimum of two. Similarly, with the SC5, four-story max, two minimum. So if you're going more vertical, creating more square footage, you're creating more parking, which then is more surface parking, which then, if you're counting that as part of your lot coverage, now you're starting to erode some of the ability to create more of that square footage that you're trying to create for the built environment. So it's this weird quandary that you end up playing with a little bit with developers at trying to get infill development down here in the downtown. So then that led to modifying the definition of lot coverage to say that the percentage of the total lot area covered by buildings. Now, me as a staff here at Post Falls, I'm not too concerned with the change because if you can get your square footage and get your parking and meet code and you can deal with stormwater and landscaping requirements in the code, you really met the intent of that zoning code and where you're wanting to go with. And you're relieving some of the design hurdles that we currently have trying to create more of that urban form. We did notify the agencies listed here about the proposed change. I'd stand for any questions you may have for me that staff's presenting regarding the Title 18A amendments.
Questions?
I think it's good.
Okay.
I think at one point that density coverage issue was kind of a pickle when we were trying to work through something, if I remember. Trying to even understand what it meant, first of all.
Well, I think anybody I've dealt with down here, it's been a bit of a hurdle to kind of design a site that be functional and get what the city center plan and what SMART code was trying to attain.
Yeah.
In an urban-type environment.
John, one thing just popped in my head. So it said ground floor, non-residential, wood, garages for, so like, let's just say like a garage-under type apartment building where there was, would garages and parking be considered non-residential if there were four?
If it's for residential, I would say it's an accessory used to residential, therefore being residential.
Okay. And one of the reasons I bring that up is that I've found that the ground floor, let's just say it's the ground floor of a five-story building where it's four stories of residential and the bottom floor has to be all commercial. And what happens is, is that if you look at the footprint, it's a huge amount of commercial square footage versus what usually there's kind of a demand for. And it's something that has been problematic in several cities that I've worked in, where essentially they're trying to do the cool, you know, retail below and then the apartment living above with an elevator corridor and not being able to use, I mean, there's a limit to the amount of retail square footage that gets, that is viable to being attached. And probably a good example of that is Riverstone, where the lower floors are, for a longest time, had a very, very difficult time being viable.
Yeah, we discussed that. And that's the reason why we went with commercial rather than non-residential, because commercial alludes to, oh, actually, it does say residential, but it doesn't preclude offices. So you could do office, there's a lot of spectrum that you can do that's outside of residential.
Okay. But I guess I'm not saying it's a bad thing to have it like this, it's just something I think we should maybe consider. Because it's from my work in the professional world of doing these kinds of things, that's a huge hurdle to get around.
And that's why we didn't say specific retail. Only retail uses on Spokane.
Even, even office space, even really any commercial-type space or any commercial use on a ground floor, it's hard. So you have to use up an entire floor of your building before you, and then lease out usually the upper floors to residents before you get any sort of interest in the commercial. So it's a large chunk of change, a lot of square footage to look at trying to build. It ends up, I guess, it just ends up being economically difficult.
Yeah. I would say that what we pondered was, you had the city center plan, and it's been identified as being where you want to have your commercial destination. We have a lot of opportunities of 41, Long Celtis Way, out west to Post Falls for strictly single-use, multifamily structures, that having this would preserve the intent of the city center plan. Once again, if for some reason things stalled, we didn't get commercial uses, we could always revisit this, but I believe this would help preserve area at this point in time.
Sure.
For creating that commerce that's desired within that city center plan.
Okay. I think I know what you mean, and the parking, if the parking was in the back and it was in the back tier typically, that's allowed a little more with administrative exception. But I don't think you could have a garage in the front street.
I wouldn't think the whole thing. I guess I wasn't, I wasn't trying to think the whole thing. It was just like the, the street frontage, like along Spokane Street, would be this really cool, I guess I've got this vision in my head, where it'd be this really cool little, you know, glass shops like Sherman, so to speak. And then, you know, above it, there's offices or apartments or whatever there is above it. But, you know, back alley access kind of thing, it's got a garage structure where, you know, not the entire bottom floor or the entire building is...
If it was in the back, I think you could make the argument that your commercial users are fronting that commercial street, but now you have this secondary function that's in the, more like second tier that SMART code calls for.
Okay.
That's providing the parking.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? I guess at this time, we're looking for a motion for approval of the text amendment?
Or recommendation to city council.
Okay.
I would move to recommend approval of the text amendment.
A second.
Okay, move to a second. The call for vote?
Hampi?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
That concludes the public hearings this evening and brings us to our next item on the agenda, and that is new business. Action item, apparently we need to elect officers.
Again.
It's been a year already.
It has been. It's been over a year now. Mr. Wilson, Mr. Manley, is there a process that we need to go through this?
I'll punt a warrant here for it.
There's nominations and a second and a vote.
Mr. Davis, I think you do a fantastic job. I would nominate you to be, to remain chair.
I second.
I third.
In a case like that, then, do I need to call for vote?
Yes.
I guess we'll have a vote.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
All abstain. You could've said no, that's fine. So at this time, we'd be looking for the election of a vice chair.
I'll nominate Mr. Kimball.
I think he's doing a fine job. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call for vote.
Hampi?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
All abstain as well, I guess.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Staff comments?
Yeah, I just want to say that staff appreciates everything you guys do. So I know that we just elected you guys in your positions, but, you know, we continually try to do better. And that's good, you know, staff and you guys as well. So thank you, guys.
We appreciate everything that you guys have done and Warren particularly, even tonight, being able to explain. I think sometimes people feel that we make emotional decisions. I think it's important to understand that. There is a pretty strict criteria that we have to work with, within. So I think it's important for them to understand that. Thank you.
Thanks. It's kind of a stilted process. And if, the first time you come in, this is your only experience with a planning process, it feels weird. So when you have a large crowd, I like to try to remind, let folks know, because they probably don't know.
Right.
There's a reason we do what we do. And then sometimes we don't have much choice in the matter.
I think that's helpful.
Absolutely.
And you can usually sense at the beginning of these meetings which ones are going to be more emotional as compared to less.
Although, there was a pretty good mix, I thought.
It's good.
That was, I thought everyone was going to be here for the first one.
Yeah. So that kind of led us into Commissioner comments. Anything else for the good of the order?
Really, just thanks, staff.
Yes.
You guys are doing a great job with the staff reports and getting them out to us. And they're concise, they have everything we need, so thank you.
Yes, very nice. And, and the presentations as well, so excellent. With that, unless you guys want to stay around a little bit longer and chat, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Can we adjourn?